We're now calling the December 13th, 2011, North Kingstown School Committee meeting to order. Thank you for all of you who have come. If we could stand and say the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lorraine, if you could call the roll, please.
Linda Alvenzado.
Here.
Mel Boyd Benson. Mel Boyd Benson is present. Mel, could you acknowledge that you were here, please?
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
William Mudge.
Here.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Do Thompson.
Here.
Richard Wells.
Here.
Julia Held.
Here.
Student representative. Thank you. Lorraine, could you call the calendars, please? December 16th, Policy Subcommittee Meeting, 10:30 a.m., Central Administration Building. December 26th, Holiday Recess Begins, Schools and Offices Closed.
We're having a hard time with the sound. Can we get more sound, please?
December 26th to January 2nd, All Schools Closed for Holiday Recess. Please note, there will be no School Committee Meeting on December 27th. January 2nd, School Offices Closed for New Year's Day. January 3rd, Holiday Recess Ends, Schools Open. January 9th, CLAC Meeting, 7 p.m., Central Administration Building. January 10th, School Committee Budget Work Session, 7 p.m., North Kingstown High School. January 16th, Martin Luther King Day, All Schools and Offices Closed. January 17th, School Committee Work Session, 7 p.m., North Kingstown High School. January 18th, Wellness Subcommittee Meeting, 3:30 p.m., Fishing Cove. January 24th, School Committee Business Meeting, 7 p.m., North Kingstown High School. And just a small change is that the Budget Meeting is now January 10th, and the regular meeting will be January 17th on the School Committee Meeting Schedule. Same schedule, same three meetings in January. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Now we come to a great part of the agenda, in that we're going to recognize the championship Davisville Middle School Soccer Team. So, guys, come on up.
This is the fun part of the evening. Come on up, guys. That's right. Get in the limelight here. It is our pleasure this evening to honor the Davisville Middle School Soccer Team. Is Principal Logan here? She should be up here with us. Come on up here, Principal Logan. Ruth Ann Logan, everybody. Remember, there's a great soccer team, there's a great principal. So, it is our honor to salute you tonight for a great season, championship season. And what I'd like to do first is to ask if the coaches could come on up here and introduce us to yourselves and to the team, and talk maybe a little bit about how the season went.
All right, I'm James Logodos, Coach of the Soccer Team. We've got Ethan Scott. Cam Ostagai. Jeff Cantor. Zach Cook. Chris Biati, right? Zach Roy. Jake McBrier. Noah Tellier. Isaiah Almeida. Noah Iden. Will Andrews. Jared Parkins. Dylan Silverstein. Phil Facy. Zach Haynes. The season went very well. We went 10-2? No. 10-2. Oh, we tied one game, didn't we? 10-2 and 1. No, that doesn't make sense. 11-2 and 1. Yeah. 11-2 and 1. Few bumps in the road, but for the most part, played pretty well. They came together as a team perfectly. Just really gelled and meshed, and I really couldn't ask for a better team to coach. They were great all season. Came to work hard every practice, came to work hard every game, and just really a pleasure to be around all season.
Okay, we're going to give out some recognition certificates here. Ethan Scott, could you come on up, please? Congratulations. Zach Roy. Okay. Congratulations, Zach. Connor Pollak. Not here tonight. Jared Parkins.
Who breaks with Jared?
Congratulations. Dylan Silverstein. Zach Haynes. Did you wear your spikes tonight? Good job. Jake Owen. Isaiah Almeida. Congratulations. Mike Fletcher. Not here tonight. Will Andrews. Tyler Hall. Not here tonight. Chris Beatty. Jeff Cantor. Noah Tellier. Jordan Dagren. Noah Iden. Zach Cook. Philip Facy. And Cameron Ostagai. Nice job. All right. The Davisville Middle School Championship Team, right here, everybody. Congratulations, team, and thank you, coaches. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the evening. It's sure to be a lot of fun.
All right. So that was probably the most lighthearted part of our meeting. And now we get on to our presentation of the Deficit Reduction and Construction Bond Aid by Carolyn Diaz of RIDE.
Tonight, I'm going to ask Cynthia Brown if she would stand in. You work with Carolyn, correct?
Yes. Can we defer her?
Cindy knows just as much as anybody.
We've seen her before.
We can go on with correspondence, and then we can come back.
Okay, okay. Take some other items, sure. Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, we're going to jump into correspondence. If anyone has correspondence.
Yes, I have several items I'd like to turn to correspondence. One is an email you received from DMS PTO Co-Chairs about the roof at the high school.
Yes, I gave everybody a DMS PTO letter.
I'm not going to read this, but I'm also going to put in a...
We're getting some sound quality issues. If we could...
An email I sent to the council and the school committee concerning the same issue, and some of the questions I had, and identifying some of the things I think we needed to do to clarify some of the issues, and I'd like to put that on the record.
Thank you.
I guess as we're all have been noticed today, we've received something from the town via the police department today. There are two letters, a December 8th letter from the town manager, and a follow-up letter today that we received about finances in the town. I'm sure we'll discuss that later, but I would like to put that on the record, please. And finally, I'd like to put on the record a document that I think I presented to the committee back in April. I have some extra copies that we probably want to talk about later on as well, and this is about savings and budget cuts and all the other good stuff. But it was something prepared back in April and May. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Alvenzado.
Just as a follow-up, the December we received today, this afternoon, about an hour before we came out to this meeting, via a police car coming to the house and knocking on the door, a letter from the town saying that we're to immediately cease and desist spending any money because we are, they fear, in a deficit situation. I know later we're going to be discussing this with our own legal counsel and finding out about it, but I never have a problem with our NK police officers because many of them are friends, but I was a little bit troubled by the police car driving up to deliver that letter. I thought there were a lot of other ways. I have a telephone number, it's posted, I have an email address, and we were going to all be at this meeting tonight, so we could have had a copy of that letter right at our places. So to have the police officer drive it up an hour ago was a little over the top, to say the least. So, we'll discuss the contents of it later.
All right. I received correspondence from the Wickford Middle School, from specifically Barbara Morris, and that she was telling us that over the past, since 1995, when she started at Wickford Middle School, the Turkey Trot has raised over $25,000, and this year specifically, they raised over $5,000. So she was very happy to report that. I would say congratulations to that school for that, because I know the food bank, I'm sure, greatly appreciated their efforts. We also all received correspondence from Norma Kayaza and Tony Silveira, two of our music teachers here, telling us who all of these students who received state honors for a band. There are many names, and on a normal night, I would read all of the names, but I think since we have a lot of things to go over, all I'll do is I'll read the firsts. And even then, we still have seven students who received first in state. We had Emily Huel, who received first in the symphonic band, junior symphonic band. Ben Sawyer, who received first in the junior symphonic band. Jesse Ray Leach received first in senior band mallets, first in senior band snare, and first in senior jazz band. Also, Paul Spattrini received first in senior jazz band, and Andrew Winston received first in senior band. So congratulations to all of them. Is there any other correspondence? Mrs. Benson.
I won't elaborate on the correspondence that you've just given, but in reading the list, and I think that says a lot for our school department, I noticed that there were many students who made the honors of being on the state band that has been with us from kindergarten through 12th grade. And I think that is worthy of us remembering during these tight budget times, when everything that anybody wanted to cut first is music and art. So there were quite a few students that have been with us from first through 12th grade that made the band. And I thought I would point that out to show the importance of those studies within our schools.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Benson. Mrs. Alvenzado.
Just very quickly, yes, I just want to second those remarks, Mrs. Benson, and I just want to say congratulations to all the all-state musicians. We have many.
Many.
And our bands and our jazz bands and all of our musicians are amazing.
Thank you. Any other correspondence? All right. That's it for correspondence, and I do see our presenter here.
Is it in order for us to discuss, will that come up later, the letter we received from the town treasurer?
I think that's been mentioned in our correspondence, and so we don't need to mention it anymore right now, but I believe that Carolyn Diaz is here, and so if... We will be able to talk about it under budget.
Well, I think it's worthy of us talking about.
Okay, and I'm not trying to put you off, I'm just saying we can discuss that.
Okay.
Ms. Diaz is here, she is our presentation, so if she would like, I can let her take over that part.
I'd like to introduce Carolyn Diaz, everybody. Carolyn is the Director of RIDE, Division of Fiscal Integrity and Efficiencies. She is the person that we go to on all fiscal matters in our district, in terms of advice from the Department of Education. I've asked her to be a part of our discussion tonight and to make a presentation to us. We have a couple of very weighty issues tonight, one of them being a deficit that we're looking at, and a deficit reduction plan, and the other being a construction aid bond that I'm asking for reconsideration of tonight. So I'd like to ask Ms. Diaz if she could address those issues for us tonight.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight. I know that I've been here before, and I see some familiar faces, so I appreciate you inviting me again back to your community. Tonight, we want to talk about two major issues, or primary issues, and I know that one of the major issues that you're dealing with, and several of our communities are dealing with, is your budget right now. So we want to be able to share with you some of the efficiencies that this department is working on, has implemented, how other communities have taken advantage of these efficiencies, and have saved some funding on that. And so we want to share with you some of those. And the second issue that's very important is the bond. We know that as part of the basic education program, one of the requirements is that you need to ensure that you have health and safety environments for your students. And so school construction and facilities is very important, and I know that this community went through a rigorous process, working on the priorities that needed to move forward as a result of the conditions of your buildings. Your local experts have raised those priorities up to the state. The state vetted those projects as a result of the latest moratorium that was put on by the legislature in June that would only allow for projects to move forward that were deemed immediate health and safety issues. So we need to, again, really take another look at the projects that came forward. That went through, again, an extensive review, a peer review, by your experts with our experts. Then that went to the House and the Senate Fiscal. Again, this was done with lots of scrutiny. Went back and forth with the House and Senate Fiscal Staff, got final approval by the legislature. That project then came for approval to the Board of Regents, and now, and it was approved. And I believe moving forward, again, you know, not only are the local communities experiencing these tough deficits, but we are, as you know, we've been working through deficit after deficit at the state level as well. And in FY13, there's a projection of $150 million deficit. That's in addition to the savings, as taking into consideration the savings that were achieved through pension reform. So there's still a very big problem at the state level in closing that budget gap. So these types of projects are going to continue to be scrutinized, and you happen to be a community that has an opportunity to be in a position to move forward with some of these critical repairs that have been deemed as health and safety issues, and get the buildings where they need to be, you know, again, on behalf of the students' safety. Tonight, I brought with me two members of my team, Cindy Brown, who's the Director of Statewide efficiencies, who can talk to you a little bit about what we've experienced in other communities around transportation, you know, nutrition programs, school lunch, school breakfast programs, some of our other types of commodity purchasing that's available. And we also brought Joe DeSilva. He's also, he's the administrator of our school construction program, who's worked hand in hand with your community, really scrutinizing these projects, so if you have any questions. One thing that I do want to just mention to you before we, you know, I asked Cindy to come up and really talk to you about what those opportunities are for you. We can only bring forward to the communities the data. We bring forward the data, the data shows and shines a light on what opportunities are available for savings. Most recently, we went to a community, and they were looking and reviewing outsourcing transportation. The data, the data showed that they would save over $1 million a year, over multiple years, multiple millions of dollars. In addition, that did not even, that was only the operations. It did not even take into effect the aging fleet of, the busing fleet. That wasn't even on the table. Their buses all need to be replaced very soon. The school committee made a decision not to outsource. They are claiming they're not meeting the basic education program. So when you make decisions, we can put the data out there, but they require very, very, very difficult decisions. So you can put the data out there, but they made a decision to put the money on the buses instead of in the classroom. So I'm just recognizing that these decisions are very tough, but we just hope that every decision that's made is in the best interest of the student, because the best interest of the student was to invest those dollars in educational materials, instructors, not on the buses. So again, I want to make sure that you understand that we can only provide you the data, the tough decisions have to be made at the local level. So with that said, I'd like to introduce to you Cindy, she's just going to talk to you a little bit. I know you have a very hefty agenda, and you're still trying to close that $700,000, but she can give you a feel for some of the programs and the efficiencies that we can offer some of the districts right now.
Thank you. I'm a little shorter. So really, what I wanted to do was highlight two of our major programs for you, because they're both areas in which you currently provide the services in-house or through a mixed arrangement. One of those is transportation, and I know you've had a unique program here for years. But I also read recently, I believe, that you were looking for a transportation consultant, and you were having some discussions, again, about the cost of transportation. As you probably are aware, we are running a statewide out-of-district transportation program. That program started out as a mandate of the General Assembly to provide out-of-district transportation for students with disabilities. It has now expanded so that that out-of-district transportation is actually covering the non-public-private out-of-district, vocational out-of-district, a whole spectrum. And right now, we have about 3,500 students that we're busing on a daily basis to over 200 different school sites around the state. What that's done is allow us the opportunity to share busing, district to district, so no longer do we have buses from 15, 16 different districts going, say, to Meeting Street School, but rather, we have a fewer number of buses with more students getting to Meeting Street School. It's saving time, it's saving money, and all of those things. That was successful, which is why it's expanded, and districts have asked for more assistance. This year, the state, in fiscal year 12, as part of the funding formula, added a categorical fund for transportation. And one of the things we're doing now is for that non-public-private out-of-district transportation that we are providing, the state has begun to assume some of that cost. So in current fiscal year 12, the state actually picked up $1.1 million of transportation costs that used to sit in the local districts, and now it's being paid for by the state. So a district's able to reduce its budget, literally reduce its budget, because the state has now assumed that cost. That's for programs that are, districts that are falling under the statewide program who we're transporting, because we're able to bring that efficiency to the table. That's certainly an opportunity for you. I know that you're currently exempt, that does not mean that it's not something you can't look at for out-of-district, and we would encourage you to do that. We're getting great reviews from the districts we're serving, even those who at first were skeptical. And when we rolled out the program, there were lots of places where it was rolled out, and people were very concerned about whether or not the service could be provided at a state level, and be done as well as it was being done at a local district. Did we really understand what it took to bus students with disabilities? Did we really understand how critical it was that they have the same driver every day, and they have that continuity of an aid and all of that? Well, it's been proven, we do, and we're doing it well. And districts who were skeptical are now raving about the services. And we're able to do it very efficiently and save some money in the process. So right now, those savings are over $2 million to districts, plus the investment of another 1.1 under the state funding formula, which we've, in the region's budget, is projected to grow next year. So I really want to encourage you to think about that when you're looking at your transportation needs, because it is an opportunity for you to save on expenses and really have a seamless transition. So I wanted to bring that to you. The other one I wanted to bring forward to you is in the area of your school lunch program, your school breakfast program. And I know you've done that in-house for years and have a very good program, but I also know that there's always an operating issue with that, and funding that has to come from the school department itself to support that. One of the efficiencies by joining the statewide system or outsourcing, you get the economy of scale for your food products by going with larger vendors rather than doing it in-house. So you get that purchasing power. Districts who were self-op and have come into the state program even, have seen labor and management costs reduced, they've seen operational efficiencies, just in the oversight even of the program, because we're constantly dealing with the statewide vendor. They're in the office on literally a weekly basis, meeting with our food service director, making sure, going over the finances of the program, what's happening, are they meeting nutrition requirements. So you've got a whole added layer of oversight, which really is extremely cost-effective, and it relieves the burden at the local level. The other thing it does, all of our efficiencies, is relieve that bidding process, because at a state level, we're held to a very high level for bidding of services, and so we have to go through a very strenuous process of procurement that goes through the Department of Administration, Division of Purchases. So everything we're doing has been bid, and now it goes on a state master price agreement, and you have the opportunity to take advantage of that without additional bidding. We have, when we rolled out that statewide school nutrition program, what we did was to benchmark fees and to create transparency, so that when you're comparing bids from one vendor to another, or even looking at the state program, what you're doing is now seeing an apples-to-apples. That wasn't true before. You now see that, and just in the benchmarking of fees, it's forced all of the other vendors in the industry to really meet that same level, to be competitive. So we've seen over the last two years, $2.7 million reduction in fees to districts as a result of putting in that statewide program. That's tremendous, and certainly something you could take advantage of. So as you're going through your budgets and you're looking for ways to trim costs, these are places where you can make some inroads into it. I know you have local labor issues and things of that nature, but there are always ways to work with that, and still to join the program and get those efficiencies. So we would absolutely encourage you to do that. We've been doing a lot of work with the school business officials now, and looking for other ways to create efficiencies, other ideas from them. So as that moves forward, we'd like to encourage your district to participate in those, to offer feedback on them, give us ideas for other efficiencies, because we have clearly seen with the districts working together, whether it's voluntary or mandatory, we are making a difference, and we're being able to return dollars to districts, which means you have more money to invest in classrooms and not... means you have more money to invest in classrooms and not put in buses and food service and all those other places. So that's really our goal, is to give you the tools back for the instructional program. So I'm happy to answer questions about our program, but I would, I would absolutely encourage you to explore it. Don't think that you can't join it, but explore it and see what, see if it makes sense for you. Yes?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Med.
The transportation, I just happen to have it here in front of me, is quite considerable with the out-of-district, uh, cost, and I think we're, we're paying for an out-of-district cost right now, but basically, I guess, vocation, special ed. Oh, probably 1.3 million dollars, 1.4 million dollars, which is substantial, and I think our total transportation is around 3 million dollars, so it's almost as much as the general ed transportation. And I think we have an excellent in-town general ed transportation. Our out-of-district transportation, if you may, we own the, the buses and so forth and so on. How long has this program been in effect, uh, this, and, and what did, what do you need to do to sign up to, 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 to apply for this funding? I might have missed something along the line here the last few months, okay? So...
There are two pieces to the program. One is the special education out-of-district transportation.
Right.
Okay, and so there isn't any reimbursement for that. What you're getting there is hopefully reduce cost, and that's what's been proven across the state. So because what's happening is you'll share ridership. No longer will you have just one bus with just your students on it. We take a look at all of the students that you have registered to go to the various schools, and we're looking at what makes sense in terms of where they're going, when they have to get there, what the age level is, what needs are, um, and working with your district's special ed director, determining the best placement and routing for them. So you save because you're able to share the rides with other districts. And we don't charge you a per-bus rate, what we're choo, doing is charging a ridership share. So if you have the bulk of the students on the bus, it's divided by the number of students. But what we try to do is have multiple districts on the bus to share that.
Has that worked out in South County, where you kind of spread out?
We have them statewide, we have them across the state now.
Do we have them in the, is it implemented in, say, South Kingstown?
We're actually doing transportation for South Kingstown out-of-district, and they're very pleased with it. Um, and they're very pleased with the savings they've been getting. The second part of the program is that, um, non-public private, so non-special ed, um, students going, let's say, proud as an example, something like that. Um, again, we're using that out-of-district part of the program, and districts are sharing ridership on that. That's the piece, when the state is providing that, that we're beginning to, um, apply some reimbursement or some assumption of cost to it.
And how long has this program been in effect?
The non-public piece was started in fiscal year 12. The program's in, been in effect now for three years. This is year three of what was a three-year phase-in. Um, so this year, we brought the largest two districts on, and all reports from, let's say Providence, because they came on this year. We've touched base with them, we've been in constant communication. Uh, they're very happy, they're saving money, and they're extremely pleased with the level of service they're getting.
I, I'm not unaware of this, did, did we apply for the program at all, off Kingstown here?
Um, not at that point, because you were exempt from the program, you were one of three or four exempt because you were doing a self-operated program. So the mandate didn't force you to come into the program, didn't require you to come in. You always have the option to come in.
Is this, I guess, because we're non-mandated, is this mandated for all the other communities? But I notice there's a lot of communities that aren't participating, like Little Camp in Middletown, Mary Gansett and so forth.
Right, they are for out-of-district, um, transportation for their in-district special ed, then it's not, we're doing the out-of-district piece.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
For non-public private, they may not have any students going, uh, to those locations, or they're doing them right on the island, and so they're doing it as part of their in-district. We're very careful to look at, um, when we're looking at those non-public privates that are not part of the special education mandate, we're very careful to look at the ridership and whether or not we can save you money and we can share buses.
How long would that take?
Um, we would need to look at your student population, where they're going, their addresses, all of that. So, um, depending on the time of year, if we were doing it now, we obviously have more time, because this is not peak season for us.
We could come next week.
I can't promise they'll do it next week, but I do have staff coming in at the end of January to do some special project work, so that's some, certainly something we could look at.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Benson?
Um, the question I wanted to ask you, and Mrs. Diaz gave a bit of it in her introduction, and mine is centered on special education. Now, we know that North Kingstown, we own our own buses.
Yes.
For special education. And for years, we used to meet at a certain point, I guess that's the downfall of living somewhere so long, but you all that's sitting up here with me. But we used to meet at a place called Babys. It's changed now. And the Jamestown buses would come there, and they would switch students. And we still own our special education buses, and I think they are doing an excellent job, because you pointed out the familiarity of a kid being with the same person. And those kids have a lot of problems, and they are very hard and very long to get into somewhere else. Now, you stated that we don't, it's not mandated that we do, but we, have you did an analysis on if we would join and abandon our system? I think you would have to go to legislature first and get a bill taken, because North Kingstown and North Citrus, it's in the general laws, and I happened to be there when it was passed, and Mr. Gomes, that we would be able to do our own bus system. So I'm wondering about how we would work that, because our buses do very well, and do you see any savings in it for us? And that would be the thing that I would have to see before we switched, uh, went into transportation. Now, I don't expect an answer from you tonight, because you would have to make an analysis of the two things.
Absolutely.
So I don't expect an answer. But before we do this, I would expect us... Before we do this, I would expect us to get some type of recommendation or an analysis from the State Department before, because those buses, we've invested a lot of money, and we just bought a new one about a month ago, am I correct, Mr. Draven?
Yes, sir.
Uh-huh, and we just bought a new one. I think all the aides on our special ed bus adhere to all the problems, the, the certification, you know, the courses you have to take to deal with the children. So we would need more information before, I know I would as a school committee member, and before, and I'm, the interest that all the members have in the students in this district, I'm sure they would need more information than to go directly to that. And that was flat on, on bussing. Now, the general transportation, I noticed that, I'm a very observant person, that yesterday, when I was turning in my street, I saw a bus that said, "Betsy Hendrickson," dropped off stools, going down one of the main thoroughbays. So it seems as though rabid schools are getting their own buses. Everybody is trying to survive. Other than maybe we care kids to charter schools, am I correct, Mr. Dr. OJ, uh, Mr. We Care Kids to Charter Schools, don't we?
Yes.
Buses. And just recently, charter schools are considered Rhode Island public schools. So we're kind of in a bind then, when it comes to laws and dealing with different things. But one question I wanted to ask you about the food. The people who get the contract for the food, do they reimburse us for our allotment of commodities from the agricultural department, or do they get our amount of commodities?
Sure. The commodities are built into the program for your district as part of your budget. So they work with the commodities you have available, because obviously you're able to purchase those at a reduced cost through the federal government program, and that's built into your budget. So you would not lose the value of your commodities under the program.
And when we get, when we get this outsourcing person to do the food, that has been a question of mine. You're getting the benefit of our commodities, because, believe me, the farmers gonna make sure that Congress get their commodities. I think they're the only ones settled, anything down there now. Do you take in, do they take in consideration the value of our commodities? Do they include that in? That's what they're saving us, because they're really not saving us if they're using our commodities. It's taken from one hand to the other hand.
Right, the value of the commodities are built into the program you're using today.
Yes, and it works very well.
So we would be building exactly that same amount of commodities in, but we would still expect to be able to bring you greater efficiencies, because you're using, I'm sure, more food product than the value of your commodities. You won't lose under that.
Mrs. Avanzato?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for coming and talking about some of the ways that we can look at. Now, I know we've, we've done some, um, analysis of some of these issues and had our administration look at it when they first began the program about three years ago, and given that we run our program a little differently in terms of busing, there was some uncertainty at that point as to whether or not we could save, but I would just ask, you know, as we come into this budget season, that our administration take a fresh look at what you guys have on offer and what we're doing currently, and, because we're gonna have to find pennies from every single source that we can, so, and I'm sure that, um, Dr. OJ is gonna be just as interested in that as Dr. Thornton was, so thank you, and I will be looking at it, I'm sure, and talking about it on future agendas.
Good, follow-up question. After Cindy?
Mr. Thompson?
Okay, I'm sorry. Have you got an idea of how much savings you can offer to our program in the cafeteria just relating to the food portion of it?
No, not without doing an analysis for, analysis for you, no.
That's why I asked, whether I could do an analysis.
No, what I'm, what I'm not suggesting is that I can tell you today how much money we can save you. What I'm suggesting is that, um, we work with your administration to actually go through that analysis, so that we can find out what's available for you. Um, for instance, in transportation, we couldn't possibly tell you what sharing opportunities are there with certainty and what that might save until we actually had your student population and rooted them into our system to see who you can share with and what that might look like, and then compared that to what you're doing today and what your costs are. So it's not a, a quick piece of work, it's a major undertaking, but what I'm suggesting is, it's one that you really should take a look at, because until you've done that homework on today's information, you don't know if you're, um, running the most efficient program or if there are some savings opportunities for you.
Okay, I'm gonna jump back to Mrs. Diaz, and then if there are more questions, we can, um, go after that, so.
I just know that you have a very, very busy agenda, so I just wanted to...
This is just as important.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to, um, make sure that, um, everybody, you know, the committee understood that we can come in, do these analyses, and make, and provide you with the data, so you can make an informed decision. One of the things I do want to caution you is you need to do some soul searching to make sure that you can make the decision, because we will come, we will help you if the data shows that you need to move, but we do a lot of work, and then the decisions are not made in the best interest of the student, so we just would caution you with that. With one other thing, the districts that are exempted right now, they have the option to come in at any time.
Okay.
So it's, there's no statutory requirement, and the great thing is, is that the legislature is starting to shift the non-public, uh, transportation expenses to the state. And the only way that you can benefit by that is if you're participating in the statewide program. So again, that's a long-term, you know, a long-term decision that you need to take into, you know, a long-term benefit that your decisions need to take into consideration now. And even with your capital, if you do join the state program, and it's, again, the data shows that it's beneficial, your capitals, you know, that's a capital expense that could be liquidated to help solve some of your budget problems, so there's ways to get out, to get around this. The other thing is, on the school lunch programs, we have school districts that sit down and negotiate with the school, with, with the vendors. Our state vendor, we, they're putting out their guarantees that you will end with an X amount of profit. You will never have a deficit if you can negotiate that with them. So there's lots of opportunities out there that are super safety nets to assure, as Cindy said, all of the investments are actually going into the classroom. In Barreville, they had a self-op, uh, school lunch program. They called us and said, "We need to close our program, like, as soon as possible, within one week time." Our state vendor went in, they went in, they, they went in for less money. So we can turn around some of these initiatives quite quickly, depending on where you are with your budget process, but more importantly, does it make sense? We're here not to say, join the, we're not here to be in the lunch business or the transportation business. Our efficiencies program is just to save dollars. And one last thing, and I'll, if there's any more specific things, our school construction program, since it's been, it's in, in place, um, with the new regulations since '07, has saved 90 million dollars. It's deferred those costs, because when districts come in, and they come in with a plan to build three elementary schools, we say, "No, let's rearrange and, and look at this, this plan." And you can build one elementary school and then rearrange some of your, your, your students in some of your other schools. So again, we can really bring some efficiency. I know that there was some concerns about whether or not, you know, do we need to spend this money? We really vet those, those applications, and we have enormous expertise now in our department to do that, and that's why we were able to achieve such, such savings. So I don't know if there's any other specific questions.
Mrs. Avanzato?
Yes, yeah, I do have a specific question related to the bond, actually. Um, we, and we probably should have discussed this in correspondence, but in front of us, we all have from, um, SMMA, a letter from the, call them, I guess, the architect or the consultant on our building projects, discussing that some of the asbestos tiles in these schools are, are considered friable, which means that the, it's in the worst possible condition prior to, like, breaking up and being in the air. And my question for you is, because you were saying that projects aren't being just approved willy-nilly, and they're usually health and safety issues, how does this kind of a situation that we have at Davisville and at Stony Lane tie into what's happening in East Providence? I mean, we want to avoid an East Providence situation, those students are at risk, there's asbestos maybe in the air, you know, and, and they may have to shut down the whole school while they do that. I mean, shouldn't we get on top of this now, isn't it imperative?
Absolutely, that's why we're here advocating for this fund, and we're working extremely closely right now with East Providence, and they happen to be one of the communities that's in a position that they have the approval to fix their asbestos program, their asbestos abatement plan, and put that into place. So, um, and so we're working with that community. As you know, that community is really struggling right now, but again, you have to be sure that you put, the students are in health and, are in healthy and safe environments. So we're really looking at this as an opportunity for your community to really address these types of health, safety issues, and we, they're tied very closely to our regulations. So there is no willy-nilly when you look at how the decisions are being made around what is deemed a health and safety issue. It's tied to code, it's tied to these types of issues that really rise up. So that's why we really wanted to come here tonight and advocate for that, that work to move forward.
Thank you. I'm actually just gonna go read down the table, Mr. Welch.
DeSilva.
I'm sorry, Mr. DeSilva, did you want to, did you have something?
Still have some questions? Okay.
Mr. Welch.
I touch the bone, and I thought that...
Hi, Carolyn, I just, for the sake of the audience...
Okay, one member at a time, please, Mr. Welch has the floor.
When you started the busing program, we wanted to opt-in, and I think you can remember that we backed out. And the reason we backed out was because we had already submitted our budget to the town council, and it had been certified. town council, and it had been certified. And as of June 23rd, we still hadn't received the numbers from RIDE as to what the situ... I know that frustrated you, and you were upset with it, you personally. But we had a situation like, how do you go forward with a budget that's now locked in? And we didn't know. Then we heard all of the horror stories from district, different districts on what they thought they were gonna save and what they didn't save, et cetera. So, just for the sake of the audience here, I want them to understand that we did look very favorable on this, but we couldn't go forward with it because of the way things didn't happen in the right progression. So I, I think this committee, you know, will check your references, if you will, and make sure that, you know, it's the right thing for us to do.
Well, that's the beauty of where you are today. We have success in the program. We can provide you with the, you know, the data now. We can actually, you know, I have to check with Cindy about the timeline, but we can actually put your students in and route them, and then you can make an informed decision about whether this is the best way to go. We were just embarking in this, the savings, we, this, this program has saved over $2 million in some districts, $300,000, $400,000 they're saving. But the biggest savings is that there's, the, the districts are no longer getting the calls from the parents. So there's an oper, it's an efficiency. All of those calls from those parents that have those special education students that are going across the borders, or have a student that's in a non-public school that's, that's being transported across your borders, that call now comes to the state help desk. And so if you would, one of the things that, we knew that that was going to be an efficiency, but we're hearing overwhelmingly from the business managers and the transportation coordinators that that, that, that is a huge relief for them, that now they can do other things. So it's not just monetary. There's other, there's other benefits from joining. But to make, to answer you, yes, I think now we're in a position to really provide you with some concrete data to determine whether or not this is the best way for you to move forward.
Agreed.
Mr. Sri C., did you want to say anything?
No, thank you.
I'll jump in here before we go down the rest of the table, but I do appreciate both, all three of you coming here today. And I know that having been involved with the last Wickford bond that came before the RIDE process change, and that was, that we were told, this is the last time it'll be easy to put a bond before the voters. And then having seen the process that went through versus the process this went through, it was much different in what we had to show, in what we had to prove that things were health and safety issues, in that things were basically of the topmost importance, and that this process was much harder in order to go through everything that we need to do. I appreciate you coming here today. I appreciate the input that you've given us. So that's all I really, we need, need or want to say, and I'll let the rest of my fellow committee members speak. Mr. Thompson.
No, thank you.
Mrs. Benson.
I want to talk about the bond issue. I was one of those who voted against the bond. Because I felt that, and I made a statement to the committee, and I've been living under assumption for the last three days that you were coming to chastise me for not voting for the bond. And the reason I didn't, I don't need to take up your time to explain it to you, but I felt that a few things were a little cosmetic. And I made the point that no child can sit in a classroom with the raindrops falling on him. I happen to know that because I've been a classroom teacher. And the less distraction you get, the more you can deal with your students. But I felt that we were being a little bit pressured. I'm gonna lay it all on the table to you because they've laid it on the table to me as if I'm the bad girl and you're here to chastise me, and we'll get that straightened out tonight.
Kim. That's point of order, that's totally...
We do want to move on, and, because we have a lot of citizens here, so I would like if, if the committee member could ask a comment, or...
Are you interested?
I just wanted to make sure that, please, we just wanted to come in here tonight to reassure the committee about the process that, that this project has gone through, to assure everyone that these are absolutely health and safety issues. I explained the vetting, and so I'm hoping that now that you have a better, better view of what, what's really happened, that that might change the way you perceive this project. Because, again, it's all tied to code and health and safety issues, criteria that are in our regulations. So, again, it's more to try to provide more information to see if you can help understand better why it was deemed health and safety. That's, that's why we're here tonight.
Well, I had a good understanding that those things had to be tied into codes and all, and the other, other things, and it had to prove to be health and safety. But asking for an amount for a bond, that you're not quite sure that you're gonna use all the money, and you've got money left from a bond that we presented five or six years ago, that doesn't give the community much trust. And my thing is, we don't need the embarrassment of voting or having a bond and then have the citizens to vote it down. That's where the catch come in.
Well, I, I just want to, again, reassure you that this vote is for the health and safety of the students because this is a project that has been vetted. And so these projects are not cosmetic. These rise up to code and industry standards that, that dictate what warrants a health and safety issue. And so it's tied, it's vetted, we can provide you, I can have Joe talk to you if you're interested. But I want everyone to be reassured here tonight that these are, these are priorities that, that met that criteria, and that's why it was approved by the legislature and the Board of Regents. It wouldn't have gone through if it wasn't.
I don't think the legislature was in session when we went up for our approval, but I'm waiting on you, Joe.
Carolyn, just to set the record straight, I think, we could apply for state participation in our special ed transportation out of district immediately. Because that portion of the state law didn't apply. It only applied to the general ed transportation, where the people bought the buses and so forth and so on. So I think I'm correct in, in saying that if we wanted to do just the out-of-district with special ed, that we don't have any handcuffs on. And I'll send you...
I think that's what I, I mentioned, that it's really up to the community whether or not they want to opt into the state, but we'll give you the data to make an informed decision.
But from our perspective, we're not tied by state...
You can do it any time you want during the year.
But from our perspective, I understand it's state law that governs the, you know, I think it's been, they've done, done a great job for us, you know, from general ed transportation. But we have two separate programs, completely. One, it's a million six or seven, in other words, a million three. A million three is basically, you know, a lot of it is out-of-district transportation. So we ought to be able to look into that very quickly and, and get some sort of assessment if we want to participate in the, you know, the part of the special ed that's out of, out of district, or anything else that's out of district.
Well, the program is for all out-of-district students, but most communities right now, again, they have their out-of-district program with the state, but they're in-district separate contract.
Yeah.
I don't know if Cindy mentioned it, I didn't, I didn't think she did, but because the statewide program has had such success, we went and did an in-district bid on behalf of East Bay, and they saved $1.5 million by us going forward with a bid for in-district. But just to answer your question, you can come into the state program for your out-of-district special education and non-public students at any point.
We don't have any handcuffs on, from your perspective, or by state law?
No.
Okay, so, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I got that one squared away. I, I do want to say that I had a lot of concerns about the bond issue, and I still do. And I sent a letter to the superintendent and asked that we get this, these issues, quite frankly, certified, that these are needs that we have to have. And I still have questions about, you know, the asbestos, and now there's some new items coming up, like it's friable and all this good stuff. Well, nobody's ever given us any, done, taken any airborne test or anything else, okay? And the reason I, I want to be very clear is, first of all, I think you guys did a great job with your construction program. As you know, years ago, I had a lot of problems with that. In fact, I had sent emails to former Regents Director Flanders, as you recall, congratulating him for staffing that office back some four or five years ago. Okay? Because I realized, because of what went on in this building with the construction with, unfortunately, this high school, and the things that did or didn't happen, we needed somebody like you, okay, to look at these things. However, I will say that four or five years ago also, we put out a bond issue and spent probably two, three million dollars to put sprinkler systems in, you know, singles or two-story schools or less. That is not required by law. Not required by state law, not required by federal law. And, see, I challenged that at the time, okay? And I couldn't get anybody to listen...
Was that pre-school construction regulations?
No. That, this is state fire code and federal fire code law, and it's on the books to any school two stories below, do not require a sprinkler system.
Okay, we're getting a little bit off track. I'd like to stick with the, with the issue at hand.
Excuse me, I'm trying to resolve my, my issues concerning construction, and I would like to make sure that you understand what my objection has been and still will be. Okay? It's the process...
Yes, and you've, you've told us this before. Could, if you could have a question, we'd like, we'd like you to ask it.
I guess I have told you this before, and that's the problem.
So just to respond to that, Mr. Mudge, first of all, that's a requirement by the state fire marshal, right?
It's not...
So you're saying that if we're, if we're basing our code, but the codes, the criteria we look at is not just the code, it's industry standards. We have, Joe is, I'm close to a PhD in, in engineering and architecture. We have another full-time architect from Tufts University with a master's degree.
See, I understand that, but when, when somebody tells me it's a code violation, it's a safety violation, and when I go to our fire marshal and he told the architects at the time, it was not a code violation.
Kim, point of order, please. Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Yes, what is your point of order?
Those are the things that I try to separate the two.
I have to take the point of order first. Yes, what is your point of order?
And the reason I...
I don't want to be rude, but can we, can you wrap this up? I understand your point.
Yeah, I certainly will.
But, Mr. Mudge, I think that, I, I understand your concerns, but you have to trust the process. We have vetted this, we've, we've looked at this from every angle, and we feel as though that these, they do not, they weren't...
We, we went to the, the state and passed with this building and also this last bond issue, and we weren't upfront with the, the folks in this town saying, "These were, these were code violations." And they were not code violations. And there's a difference whether we want something or we have a definite code violation and an obligation to meet the code.
Okay. I respect your interpretation. The process...
The fire marshal.
I understand that. The process for this particular bond issue in question was one that looked at building code requirements for a specific project. So what, what, there are a number of other things that get brought in. If you do a, a major amount of renovation, a whole bunch of other codes kick in. So I can't speak specific to what happened in the past, I wasn't involved in that, but I can assure you that this work in front of you, this $6.4 million, has been certified as health and safety.
By whom?
By professionals.
Let's see...
By professionals licensed in the state of Rhode Island to determine that, and then by state-licensed professionals.
Now, with respect to that, I'll just ask one question, then I'll be quiet, because I'll send you a follow-up email. Are you telling me that the ADA requirements of a million dollars are something that must be done, and if we don't do it, we'll violate federal, state regulations?
I am telling you that, that the scope of work of the $6.4 million has been professionally certified as immediate health and safety work, and that if the, the school committee does not proceed with a plan for that work, that they may jeopardize the health and safety of the students who occupy those buildings.
Would the governance commission and disabilities agree with you in terms of the million dollars of work you want?
Yeah.
Have they even informed the list? ADA requirement?
They will be part of the process of moving forward and will review any of those improvements that confirm that.
Sure. And that's exactly what I asked. Let me go through and have these things certified by the people who are responsible, and then I'll support them.
All right. I'm going to go to Dr. O'Jay now.
I know that these issues are gonna come up again, once we get to this item on the agenda, so I'm gonna save my comments for this. But I definitely want to thank Carolyn Diaz for coming tonight and for our friends from RIDE. You have given us a lot of wisdom tonight, things to really think about. I, I feel when, you know, the way you have put it, it seems very obvious that we need to be moving in this direction, both in terms of the money-saving ideas that you put before us, that many districts are taking advantage of, we need to be taking advantage of them as well, and also about this bond. It's about the health and safety of our kids. We gotta stop the arguing, we gotta vote on this, and we gotta make this happen. It's ultimately up to our voters, and as Mrs. Benson noted, you know, voting for a bond right now is never easy. But I would like to have the opportunity to talk to the people of North Kingstown about how important this is, and to let them know that this is not a luxury item, this is the health and safety of our kids, this is imminent safety risk, this is a roof that's possibly not only leak, but fall in on our kids. We have to do this. So I really appreciate you coming this evening. Thank you.
One final comment, please. Could we get a month's extension?
No, I'm not going to recognize anything now. I'm going to share the citizens' comments.
Could we get a month's extension from RIDE to...
We're now going to go to citizens' comments.
Excuse me, point of order? I'm asking for some leeway so we can figure, work this thing out with us and the town council possibly? Could we get a month's extension?
No, we have six months, according to...
No, we don't have six months.
We have six months, and that's it.
Excuse me.
That's what RIDE has given us, and if we don't decide within the six months, we lose all opportunities.
No, 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 it's not enough. We were asked to sign...
So, we are going to now move on to citizens' comments.
Point of order.
Is the next, what is your point of order?
Point of order. You are absolutely incorrect. We were asked to sign this and return this back to RIDE by December what?
Thank you, I'm cutting you off.
We were asked to...
Okay. It is now citizens' comments. If today is a work session, we've had four people sign up. You're more than welcome to come up and speak. It, since it is a work session, if before we go to vote, you would also like to speak on something, you merely come up to the mic, and as soon as I see you, I will acknowledge you.
So the first person we have is Mark Zakaria.
Honorable members, good evening. I am Mark Zakaria. For the record, I live on 35 Congdon Hill Road in the Saunders Town section. You should know also that I am currently the chair of the North Kingstown Republican Town Committee. At our regular meeting last Wednesday, the committee charged me to come here with a message of support for each of you tonight, regardless of your party affiliation. Our committee has just gone through the deliberations for a platform position for the upcoming election, and we are firmly in favor of promoting the reduction of municipal costs as a means of bringing relief to our taxpayers, all of whom are having great difficulties keeping up in these difficult times. You've heard tonight from Ms. Diaz and the RIDE staff, some of the challenges you'll be facing. We at the NKGOP are very mindful of the fact that you have to balance educational excellence, and in fact, increasing that excellence, with decreasing overall expenditures, and we know that you are up to that challenge, and we support you in it. Our 50 active members, 200 or so adherents and friends, represent a large core portion of the 21,000 voters here in North Kingstown, and we strongly back you up in any reductions that you can finally find your way towards making. I would ask you to be up to that challenge, and remember that there is a portion, we'll find out how big a portion at the next election, but there is a great portion of the voting population that has your back as you make these tough decisions. Good luck. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, I think it's McGovern. Oh, McGovern, okay, thank you. And then next after that is Jill Johnin.
Good evening. First, I could thank you. I know this is a lot of time, and having people talk at you is probably not the most comfortable thing. So I would, this is a working thing, I would like to rather just make a statement and maybe ask a question. Are you allowed to respond to me?
No, usually it's just citizens' comment, and we don't respond, sorry.
All right, so comments. I looked over your budget, and it was very interesting, and to summarize, what I've found is that you are not pulling in enough money because you overestimated the amount of students you were going to have, so, right? And you underestimated the human capital costs. So I look at this, and I say, okay, less students, less revenue coming in, but wait, human capital is still higher. You have a structural problem. So I also back up Mr. Zakaria's comments, basically saying, you got a budget. I think you said it was locked in. I would suggest that you live within it, so maybe start cutting. The other question I have, something to think about since you can't answer it, is why you don't have a capital improvement line in your budget?
No.
You knew that roof was coming for 20 years.
We do.
Okay, then why isn't it funded?
They didn't fund it.
Who didn't fund it?
The town council.
State law is schools' boards are responsible.
That's not part of this budget, this separate budget.
Okay, we're going to let Mr. McGovern speak.
That's the problem.
Thank you.
I was very interested in what the man had to say, because I think I can learn something.
And I, and I want just him to speak. Remember, this is citizens' comments, this is citizens' comment, and we listen.
We can, we can answer their questions.
Johnin, you may speak, and we will be quiet.
And we will answer questions, because he has questions.
Jill Johnin, 102 Saidot Drive. And I just wanted to speak on two issues tonight. First of all, I support the maintenance of our, of our schools and critical repair projects, such as the new roof at Davisville Middle School. And if they require voter approval, then the citizen should have the opportunity to support these initiatives. And it's unfortunate that the question couldn't have been on the last, on the ballot in the last election, so we wouldn't have to have a special election. But if indeed this does require voter approval, I think the, the questions should go to the voters. I also wanted to address the telecommunications. We invested money in an independent report looking at the town and the school's information technology. And in the report, they, they highlight some of the areas of the school department's telecommunications that need upgrading, and they also specifically recommend that the school department upgrade to the voice-over internet protocol by expanding the town's voice-over internet protocol. So I just really hope that we're utilizing the investment that we made in this assessment report so that we can improve our services and consolidate. And, you know, we're fortunate that our town has a very talented information technology department that has won a variety of awards, and we have other towns that are contracting their services. And I hope that the school department can get to the point where we can tap into that expertise so that we can improve the technology services and expand the educational services to our students. Thank you.
Jill.
Thank you.
There will be a meeting.
Okay, this is merely citizens' comments. We're citizens' comment, and we get to listen. They get to listen to us all the other times, this is their time to comment.
Oh, good.
Mr. McGuinn.
I wish you would have added the state attorney's ruling concerning all the...
Thank you, Mrs. Benson, I have. Mr. McGuinn, you have the floor. Thank you.
But we cannot vote on...
Mrs. Benson, Mr. McGuinn has the floor.
Yes. First question is, in a work session, may you ask questions during agenda items?
This is just citizens' comments, so you may come up and comment.
I'm asking a question of how you're running the meeting first. In a work session, can a citizen ask a question after the discussion of the committee?
You may come up and comment before we make a vote.
On each item?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to say that. First of all, the school budget includes not only child-facing expenses, but administrative expenses as well. And you have the new universal chart of accounts, and it's supposed to be mapped to the basic education plan. And in the last budgeting process, it was asked several times by members of the Budget Committee for that, what was the cost of the basic education plan, and it was never provided. We're now six months into the budget, and we find that we're $1.2 million in deficit. You have not voted on reductions, so the deficit right now is 1.2. I bring it back to how a $1.97 million deficit was reconciled in 2007, in August. There was a motion made by Larry Cerisi to accept the superintendent's recommendation that the school committee budget subcommittee suggested for the '07-'08 school year, and seconded by Mel Lloyd Benson. Kim Page stated that she had reservations concerning the approval of these cuts at the subcommittee meeting, but compromises have to be made. Mr. Honan, the superintendent, asked for people to lobby the town council. We have a deficit this year, but instead of asking for help immediately, a letter was written that put us in an adversarial relationship, school and town. We just heard from the director of Rhode Island Department of Ed, Division of Fiscal Integrity and Efficiencies. There are many efficiencies. 2007, we had a budget, and in 2007, Mr. Cerisi and then the council president wrote an article about consolidation and how it could save $300,000. We've had a report for five months, as Ms. Johnin just said. There are many opportunities for us to save in administrative functions that don't involve students, that don't involve students, hundreds of thousands of dollars. We ought to be looking at those, we ought to be looking at those to close this budget The, a lot has been put on outsourcing and the negotiation with the educational support personnel. When I read the memo that came out, it said that there was an anticipated $560,000 of savings that apparently they don't feel they're going to get this year. But then offsetting that was $510,000 of savings in pay, FICA, social security, dental, fuel oil. That's a net 50. That's a net 50,000, and there's, I think, a million dollars in the school's undesigned fund balance, of which 450,000 is undesigned, unallocated on anything. So why do we have a deficit?
Mr. McGuinn, your time is up. You'll have other opportunities to come up to the mic if you'd like to comment.
Well, I have one more thing, and then I'll, I'll...
Your time is up. If you'd like to come up to the mic when we...
I'll, I'll come up later.
Thank you.
But I, I wish we weren't in a deficit. And I do support the bond, but you need credibility in your budget before you get a bond.
You have a question?
No. We are now moving on to superintendent's report.
I just want to make a couple of comments. Today, I attended, along with Mrs. Page and Dr. Humbird and Dr. Kenworthy, a meeting at the Coventry Career and Tech. We had learned some information about the catchment areas for Career and Tech, and if the plans for RIDE that are going to go forth in early January come to fruition, it would appear that in the future, North Kingstown will be in the catchment area for Charahoe and no longer for Coventry. We, as a committee, have spoken on many occasions about our desire to be affiliated with Newport, and I'm going to put together a letter in response, and Senator Vanessa Cooley, who is the liaison for Career and Tech at RIDE, about that wish. Because we do not have the opportunity to do this at tonight's school committee meeting because of the timing, and there is not another school committee meeting before January 5th, I would ask that any school committee member who would endorse that would please sign that once I let you know what is contained in the letter, and come to my office and endorse it. It is something that, you know, obviously, we're going to look at closely, and I plan on, on making some presentations about that in the near future when we get a chance on an upcoming agenda item. I also just want to clarify a couple of things. Mrs. Johnin talked about the Cox contract, and, you know, we, we did spend $40,000 on a study, and the study does say that it recommends the school department go to a voice-over internet protocol, or VoIP. And, and that may be an option at some point. Right now, when we look at the numbers and we look at the money that the E-LERT study puts together, half a million dollars to make that transition right now.
That's incorrect. Jesus, God.
That is not incorrect.
It is incorrect.
Mr. Mudge, you do not have the floor. The superintendent has the floor. Go on, Dr. O'Jay.
And so, so, as has been discussed exhaustively by this committee and by the consolidation committee, I have worked with Mr. Booth, who and his department are also an award-winning technology department, and have looked at those numbers very closely, have vetted everything as carefully as we can, and have gotten input from the town, from Jason Albuquerque and Mike Embry. And it is our conclusion that going to VoIP right now would not save us any money, would cost us a lot of money, it wouldn't save us money in the short term, and it wouldn't save us money in the long term. And if I felt that it did save us money in the long term or the short term, I would advocate for it. But I'm not, because when you really look at the details, and, and that's something that I urge everyone to look at, once the consolidation news comes out and people start endorsing that, we have to look at the details. We have an award-winning IT department, and the E-LERT study commended Mr. Booth and called him exemplary on financial management. We have a lot of good things going on in terms of our IT, and what I would hate to have happen is to destroy a lot of the good things that are going on in the name of saving money, when in actuality, sometimes it wouldn't save money. There are some things in there that I agree we should probably be doing, but there's a lot in there that I don't know we should, so I think we need to look at the details. As far as the comment made about the BEP and looking at an analysis of the cost of the BEP, that question has been asked a lot of times, has been answered a lot of times. It's not a simple formula. You can't just say, here's what's in the BEP, here's how much it costs. And as Carolyn Diaz pointed out tonight, we have an obligation via the BEP to educate our students. That's our obligation, and, and there are some essentials going on with that. And one of them is to make sure that they have safe buildings. That's a BEP item. Can that be quantified in terms of how much it is for every district to say, if I have this many students, here's how much it costs me to have safe buildings? We have had a lot of experts come on out, experts, people with PhDs in engineering and architecture, telling us that we have a major safety problem in our schools. And it seems to me we need to be listening to that. So that's a BEP item. There's no one simple formula. So I know people are saying, we ask for all the time and we never get an answer. That's not true. You get an answer, the answer you get is one that you don't like. So I, you know, I'm asking the committee tonight to approve the Cox contract because we've done our work. I hope that you will be persuaded by a rational argument. I hope that you will advocate for this bond. It's the right thing to do. Again, we've made a rational argument, we've had all the right people show up with the right expertise to tell you that this is the right thing to do. I hope you will listen. And as far as the expenditure plan, I feel it is critical that we take the advice that we're hearing from RIDE and the lead that we're seeing from other districts who have explored cost-saving options. We're in the middle of negotiations, and we have to do it right through the negotiations. But we need to be looking at these hard questions and making some hard decisions, and going through the process, and giving our, you know, our colleagues at ESP and in our, our teachers' union the opportunity, when, when it's their turn, to, you know, look at these things with us and come up with opportunities that would save us an equal amount of money. But we need to be saving that money. It's way too important, because if we don't save the money in those places, the next places we go are teachers, paraprofessionals, and sports programs, and books, and that's what we do. That's the essentials. That's what a school system does. So I, I need you to be looking seriously at these cost-saving measures. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
May I comment, please?
No, this is the superintendent's report, and we will have plenty of time to make comments when we come to each thing that has gone to vote.
Can't make any comments on the superintendent's report?
No. So we are now coming to executive session. We have disclosure of executive session votes. Lorraine.
All members were present at tonight's executive session of the North Kingstown School Committee. A motion was made by Mel Mudge, seconded by Linda Avanzato, to uphold the recommendation of the superintendent regarding a student matter. Motion passed 403, with Joe Thompson, Mel Benson, and Larry Cerisi abstaining. Motion was made by Larry Cerisi, seconded by Linda Avanzato, to adjourn executive session and go into open. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to seal the executive minutes from December 13th, 2011?
So move second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Go.
Okay. Mr. Welch.
Yes, I'd like to request that we go, jump on the agenda and go to item V, V1 and V2.
So you're saying that you want to jump over the consent agenda?
Yeah, there's some people in the audience that are here specifically to speak to that situation. We get to that, I appreciate it.
So, V, so part five, unfinished business, B?
B1.
B1.
What page is that on, please?
Four.
Page four.
Thank you.
All right.
And I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider the vote on the submission for the bond authorization request. Tack it.
Point of order.
Yeah.
What is your point of order?
Point of order is if you didn't...
The lawyer's going along with it.
If you didn't vote.
No, they didn't.
In the, in the parliamentary...
I think they're breaking new ground in the parliamentary procedures.
That's correct. You can't do that, Mr. Welch, with the parliamentary procedures.
Well, I had a question about this myself, as to what you can do in parliamentary procedures. So last night, I got out my parliamentary procedures book.
Why are you looking at the book? You know, I...
Because I want to be accurate. And Article 6, we...
Time out. Point of order. Could we hear from the council?
What is your point of order?
Could we hear from our council on this, please?
The chair has the floor, and then you can. The chair has the floor right now.
I will say what I have to say, and then I will ask Mary Ann if I'm correct or not. Article 6, motions, unclassified motions, number 37, to rescind an appeal, it talks about that you can make a, a motion to rescind on certain cases, and it can be introduced when there's nothing else before the assembly. I took a look to make sure that I have this right. I got out my Robert's Rules for Dummies, which many times helps me classify things. And basically, since we have advertised that this is a motion to reconsider, you can do a motion to reconsider by a majority vote, is one of the times that you can do it. And you don't, if it has not been advertised, you need a two-thirds vote. But since we have advertised that we were going to do a motion to reconsider, all we need is a majority vote to reconsider.
Oh, so you can stack the deck, is what you're saying.
I'm telling you what Robert's Rules of Order are. I'm not making this up. I'm telling you what the motion is, I mean, what the rule is.
Does it say who has standing to make that motion?
It does. It says that anyone can make the motion, so...
That's why I made the motion, I'm anyone.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. You, you are.
And you missed the vote of the night.
Madam Chair.
Look, why can't we look at this thing differently?
Yes, Mrs., I'm going to defer to, to Mary Ann Carroll.
Chairman Page and I had a conversation this morning regarding a motion to reconsider, and we both... and we both did our homework. I actually went through Robert Rules of Order Newly Revised 10th Edition. And in a standing committee, anyone who did not vote with the losing side can make a motion to reconsider. And it goes on to say reconsider can be one who voted with the prevailing side or one who did not vote at all or even was absent. Since Mr. Welch was absent, he has a right to make the motion to reconsider. And again, it's on page 318 and 319 of Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised 10th Edition.
And who's eligible to vote?
Everybody's eligible to vote and anybody who wasn't here is eligible to make the motion to reconsider.
Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Mrs. Avanzato.
Just want to briefly, I hope we don't go take an hour just on the fact that we're having a motion, but just briefly, and if you look at this from a fairness standpoint, we had two members that weren't even here and we voted on one of the most important things that we're going to be doing, which is a bond to repair these schools. I think it's entirely appropriate and the way Robert's Rules is set up, majority rules. And we didn't have our whole committee together, so I think it's entirely appropriate that the issue be revisited.
Mr. Thompson.
Okay, since I see the way this is going, I guess it's time to talk about the issue. And the issue is that like the magicians they are, they're distracting you by holding this up in front of your face. We've got to have the bond. It's for the kids. It's safety. Well, we don't have to have the bond in order to fix the roof at Davisville Middle School. I've got a letter in front of me from SMMA, the associates, and they've taken this entire $6.4 million that they're asking you to, asking us to put before the town as a bond and they've divided it into three priorities. The first priority is Davisville Middle School, right at the top. Failure is imminent. And we are so in agreement with that at this end of the table. We know that there is money in the town budget, in the school budget, in the previous bonds that's out there without going out to the town for $6.4 million of a brand-new bond and we can get that roof fixed. I was under the impression until I came in this meeting tonight that we would have to wait until the end of the school year in order to fix this roof. And I've gotten somewhat of information to the point that maybe they could fix the roof while school is in session. I'm not sure how that would even work.
Okay, Mr. Thompson has the floor, please.
So that was the first, that's the first priority out of that $6.4 million bond is the roof at Davisville Middle Schools, imminent failure. We want to get that roof fixed. There's nobody at this table who wants to get that roof fixed more than myself. Then the next priority, they talk about health and safety issues and asbestos. And somewhere in the middle of that paragraph, it says, "In both cases that they're talking about, a building or public health official could require the removal of the asbestos or provision of washable ceiling tiles immediately." I would like to have that immediate order take place so that that would make me feel as though this is an imminent health and safety requirement. It says they could, but so far, I don't think it has occurred. I don't think we have been ordered to do this. And the same thing is in the paragraph three. These are other items that they put down to a lower priority now. They told you from the microphone that they were all equal priorities, but it doesn't say that in this memo that we've got in front of us. And the third priority are things that are not linked to any immediate emergency health or safety issues, but may present future liability. And at the shape we're in right now with our budget, I would just assume wait until the future liability has been presented to us by someone official. Now, let me say one last thing because I can see I'm going to lose on this one, but that's okay. I just want to say the cost of putting this bond in front of the town is going to be somewhere in the range of $10,000 to $20,000 that is going to come out of the school budget. And we have been told that we do not have authority tonight, as of Wednesday night, we don't have the authority to make any spending decisions from this table. And so far, we've done it. Once we pass that bond, and you're assuming that the people will, the last time they had a chance to vote for an extra half a million dollars for funding for the schools, they said no by 77%. But maybe they're going to have a big change of mind. But once we pass that bond, that means every year for the next 20 years, there's going to be a bond debt of whatever, 300, 400,000. That's going to be added to the existing bond debt, which is already a crushing amount of bond debt and which is then going to be subtracted from the property taxes in this town before the town council even begins to think about funding the school programs, which means that either the schools are going to be underfunded for next year's budget or else taxes will be raised to the maximum or probably both. And I think that's the part that sticks with a lot of people in this town. They say, why are you forcing us by waving this red flag of our children, you know, taking classes and the building falling down on top of them when you already have the money sitting there that you can actually go and spend on this project? And then you're going to end up pushing us into a poverty position for the next 20 years while we pay off this bond debt of the $6.4 million in only, and we don't even know what it is, maybe $2 million is what it's going to cost to fix that Davisville roof. I don't know because we haven't gone out with an RFP. So that's, that's how I'm going to vote on this. And if you figured out a way of getting yourself a parliamentary approval to bring this up again, I can see where it's going to go and we'll let the people decide.
Dr. O'Jay. And then Mrs. Avanzato.
Excuse me, I had my hand up.
And Dr. O'Jay had his.
I did as well. I just want to say that the document that you're reading from, Mr. Thompson, is something that I gave to you tonight. I would like to read it. I got it because I felt I was addressing what Mr. Mudge was talking about. You just mentioned, when will someone of authority talk to us? I cannot believe you've asked that question after Carolyn Diaz and her crew, who are the authorities in the state about these issues, have just addressed you. I can't believe you would do that. As you quote Edward Fernet, who is the principal in charge of an architectural firm and is a member of the American Institute of Architects, I can't believe you would do that when in your packet you have the Board of Regents Chairman Carullo. And this was at the request of, excuse me?
It has nothing to do with-
Dr. O'Jay has the floor.
Mrs. Benson asked me to get the comments of Chairman Carullo because she felt like she needed to hear from an authority. I collected them. These were addressed to me, Mr. Draper and Mr. Welch when we went to the Board of Regents meeting. He says, "The General Assembly has severely prescribed our ability to approve these things," meaning bonds. "Right now, we are working on a razor-thin premise that health and safety are the only reasons we can approve them. And virtually everything we do, we are running by them, the legislature first. So I would submit to you that if you wait, you may run afoul of an even more restrictive policy in the coming General Assembly session, and I am not being critical of them, they are struggling with gargantuan issues. If I were advising someone from my own town, being very sympathetic to their position, then I wouldn't want to wait at all. I wouldn't want to get the vote, I would want to get the vote over as soon as possible because we are not free to approve anything anymore, at least for some short-term duration." The authorities that have been advising us have said, yes, you're right. And by the way, they don't say priority one, two, and three. They say the first two items are priority one. The third item is listed as priority two. And I will read them. They're brief. Priority one, failure is imminent. The roof at Davisville Middle School is in this category. It is at the end of its useful life and may fail at any time. The HVAC systems at Davisville Middle School in Quiddnesett and Stony Lane, so it's more than just Davisville, Quiddnesett and Stony Lane Elementary Schools are also at the end of their useful life and again, may fail at any time. Failure to repair any of these items risks disruption of the school year should they fail and the loss of reimbursement for the cost, which is very real. Priority one also, not priority two, priority one, health and safety. This is an issue Mr. Thompson has brought up many times because he has claimed to be somewhat knowledgeable about asbestos abatement. Asbestos abatement at the Davisville Middle School and the provision of washable ceiling tiles in the food service areas at Davisville Middle School and Hamilton and Stony Lane Elementary Schools, so it's not just Davisville, are directly related to protecting the health and safety of the students and other building occupants and should be addressed without delay. Since the asbestos floor received a porous rating possible for tiles, it is friable, easily broken up and able to become airborne and a code violation. In both cases, a building or public health official should require the removal of the asbestos or provision of washable ceiling tiles immediately. Again, such an occurrence risks the disruption of the school year and the loss of the reimbursement of cost. Then priority two, ADA accessibility. These are items that are required under the Americans with Disabilities Act. They are not linked to any immediate emergency health or safety issues per se, but if not addressed, may present future liability to the district, liability that I would not like to take on, particularly when people's safety is involved. You've asked for an authority to address you on this. We have done that. To me, this is obvious. This is not something we wait on. This is not something we play politics with. It's right in front of us. We have the opportunity to do something right here and do something good for our community. And you always talk about democracy. I'd like to exercise some democracy and let the people vote on this. The bond that you said failed, we were voting for turf. We weren't voting for the safety of our kids and a roof falling in over our kids. So I'd like you to get your facts right and again, I would ask the committee to move on this, take their vote, let's do this. Thank you.
Okay, the order of people I have is I'm going to make a comment, then Mrs. Avanzato, then Mr. Mudge, then Mel. Mrs. Benson. My comment is, remember, all we're asking to do is put this out to voters to decide. This is not something that we are deciding right now. It is mainly saying, voters, do you want to fund this or not? And if you decide to fund it, oh, we will get 30% back from the state. If we wait, we will not get 30% back. We will still have to make the health and safety payments, but we will not get any money back from the state. It is not a crushing debt that we are entering into. We have been told by the town that it is 10 cents per thousand. And so that works out to a house of 2,500, or 2,500 to being $25 per household.
250,000.
I'm sorry, 250,000. That works out to be $25 per household. $25 to make sure your child is safe and doesn't have the roof. I can't imagine that there isn't a parent out there who hasn't bought their child something to only spend $25 to make sure that their roof hasn't fallen. We're not talking crushing debt. We're not talking an extreme amount of money here. We're making sure that this bond is only for the things that are absolutely necessary. Mrs. Avanzato.
Well, just a couple of comments. You know, a lot of people sitting up here at this table have been extremely fiscally conservative. We've reined in a runaway train in the school department. Under Dr. James Halli, we had 5% to 6% increases for years in this budget. It increased apace ahead of any increase in the economy and that's why we're in the hole we're in now. These buildings were never taken care of. So we are landed with the problem of what do we do about it, just like many other communities. But unlike those communities, we're not going to shirk our responsibilities like East Providence to where kids are actually threatened with harm. I'm not going to argue whether the roof is going to fall in tomorrow or whether it's going to be potentially dangerous two months from now because I'm not going to play with those kinds of issues. So we have a very severe responsibility and obligation to the kids under our care to make sure that they're safe. Now, the town council can decide where they want to get the money from. If they want to pull it from their $8.5 million fund that they have, then they could do that. But I don't see it happening since they haven't funded our capital project budget in three years, not one penny towards capital.
Point of order.
What is your point of order, Mrs. Benson?
My point of order is, this is a school committee meeting and if you have any chance-
That's not a point of order. Mrs. Avanzato has the floor. 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 Go on.
Okay, be that lenient.
The town council has a couple of options and we have our options. And if the voters choose to not support this bond, I think it will be a mistake, but the council will still have to find a way to take care of these buildings. So for three years, we've asked for some money to be put aside in our capital budget to take care of our buildings because as we all know, the money that comes in every year is for operations for the school department. There's no money in there to take care of the buildings. So to my mind, people have worked very long and hard. This is not some sort of fraud or over expenditure the way we've seen in the past, which is, I think, some of the reasons why bonds were turned down in this town. I know that's one of the reasons I pulled the lever now on several occasions when Dr. Halli was in charge. This is a whole different matter. It's been looked at very, very closely. Briefly, too, in terms of the things that need to be done related to the Americans with Disabilities Act, if you're going to break into those schools and break ground and start pulling things apart and taking asbestos out and you don't fix those ADA-compliant issues, it makes no sense. Any builder would tell you that because they have to be dealt with sooner or later before we get sued by a parent or someone who can't access the building the way they should be able to. Because once you actually build onto some of these buildings, you're then in violation if you don't correct the ADA issues. Just wanted to make sure, yeah. So in closing, it just, it doesn't make sense to wait until this is a crisis situation like they have in East Providence and I think we have an obligation.
Mr. Mudge.
Thank you. I think, I'm going to just read what I sent to the town council and the school committee some time ago because I was hoping to avoid this, truly. We need a roof because, you know, I don't have any problem with that. Okay, but I did have a lot of questions and for somebody to say tonight, the roof is caving in, that is absolutely not true. And to use threats like that is disingenuous in my, in my, as far as I'm concerned. But here's what I just wanted to tell every, to say.
That's how I have to say it.
Okay? And by the way, I think the folks that did, that worked on this did a good job and I don't have any qualms to criticize them, but there are some issues that I think needed to be further explored and that's why I sent this memo to everyone. I was hoping to delay by a couple of weeks the forwarding of the $6.4 million bond to the town council till after the school committee had an opportunity to fully discuss the attached closure, which requires school committee members to certify and acknowledge that they had received a copy of the RIDE construction regulations of May 24, 2007, which I hadn't read, to be honest with you. And it says then, "Understand the requirements imposed by these regulations. Be undersigned and further agreed that they will at all times, you know, work at the project and do all these other good things." So there's a responsibility in our part. And what I wanted, went on to say is, for the record, I do not feel the expenditure of 500,000 to remove, replace the floor tiles at Davisville Middle School is an immediate health and safety issue that must be mitigated, okay, at this time because there's a statutory requirement. And nobody has said that, okay? And that's what I wanted to explore. Additionally, I feel the same about $900,000 expenditure related to meeting certain ADA requirements. While these items may eventually need to be accomplished, they're no more important than correcting the high school ventilation system and deficiencies we sit here today with, which could very well be a health and safety issue. If the school committee wants to accomplish every bond project, that's fine, okay? And we should go forward with that. But we should not misinform the community into believing the reason is that we have a urgent health, safety deficiency. This must be, that must be mitigated this and next year. Also, the school committee needs to address the expenditures of the $2 million bond in terms of all these things. As noted, I will not sign the RIDE memorandum until we can fully vet this. And I wanted to go through this process. And tonight, I wanted to say, you know, we still have time to go through the process and the letter that we had here from RIDE said it had to be back November 21st. November 21st. That's why I said, gee, could we extend this thing for a month so we could maybe work at the council and work this thing out and look at some of these other ways that we could explore this thing? You know, because we need the roof. And just to let you know, I have consulted a local, and I don't think you'll mind me mentioning his name, as part of my recommendation to Dick earlier was, well, you know, the cost of the roof went from $2 to $3 million. That's a pretty good leap and maybe for very- That's a pretty good leap, and maybe for very good reasons. We talked about maybe that the insulation might be wet and so forth and so on, and I totally agree with that. I talked to Mr. Orhan today, who's in this business, and he, and I said, you know, what can we do? Because he had consulted me on the roofs that we had several years ago and the jobs we had there. And he said, look, I'm gonna, I'll help you on this, and my company will not, will not bid on this project. And one of the first things he recommended was, as well as Mr. Gwynn, that he says, look, I'll first of all give you a cost of what it would require, which you need to do anyway, to do a infrared review of your roof to see if you have leaks and where they're at. Now, that seems like a reasonable approach to take, okay? So, we could find out the extent of that. In addition, if we fund that and the town funds it with us, we know exactly, and we have a parameter to put into the contract, which I said, why don't we start to put a contract out to do the roof now and have that in place? And hopefully, we'll either have the source funding from the state through a bond issue, the source funding through the town, or the source funding using the application of the 2 million dollar bond, which we could ask for. I wanted to work with the council and everybody to look at these different alternatives. Now, with the fires, there's three other projects in there. I don't think the committee was ever told and looked into this, that we could submit 500,000 dollar projects each year, okay? And we can get our reimbursement back in two years, and it wouldn't take 20, 20 years to get it back. So, there were different ways to accomplish some of these things, which, which might have been much less expensive. So, again, this is why I sent this to the committee, to say that, you know, can we sit out, can we look at this? Are there any other, you know, any other ways to skin the cat and get there? Now, with Mr. Orhan, he's gonna come back, and he's gonna give me a cost estimate, which could go out with an RFP, which may need to be done, which will give you an idea of what the extent that you might have to, by the way, let me go back a second. When we talked to the committee, the explanation I received, which was, you know, I understand it, it is, they felt that 2 million was an estimate that we had for the roof a few months ago. It says, well, we may have these other problems, so, you know, we put in 3 million. Well, we have a chance to validate that by going out and having the roof with infrared photography, if you may, taken to find out what really the problems are, so we have a better handle on what the cost of the roof is, and so we can go forward and, you know, look at these different options. This is what I was trying to do. I wasn't trying to sabotage a roof, and I'm not gonna go out and tell somebody that the roof is falling in when it's not falling in. And now I find out that somebody says that the floor tile, and Linda, you can remember this because you had the same question, it says it's friable. Well, if it's friable, let's get a medical group in here, let's take some readings, and let's find out how, if it is, then we better do something. That's all I'm saying. I want some of this stuff validated, and it's always what I wanna do. What's happened here in this high school and the construction and the other things is to validate this. But I will not be intimidated with, you know, this guy or that guy or somebody else said, this is mandatory. Let's get the, also, let's get the Governor's Commission on Disabilities down to say if we need these different elevators or whatever, this is a million dollars. Because I believe 100% that, in fact, if we're gonna, we're gonna spend 500,000, we ought to be spending it. And I'm gonna read you a quote right from the regulations from the State Department of Education, and who they quoted, okay? Is, this high school, we should be spending 500 or maybe more thousand to take care of the heating and ventilation problem, which has gone ignored for 10 years. And here, look at what it says in here. We say, let's go to the Northeast Collaborative for High Performing Schools. And what it says in here, high performing schools, okay? Just one quickie, then I'll be quiet. High performing schools are thermally, visually, and acoustically comfortable. Teachers, students, and administrators are neither too hot nor too cold as they cannot be. Now, this is, this is something that is a priority, and we've ignored it. Are some of these things in this bond something we can put off a year or two? Can we get different funding from the town and do capitalization projects with the town and set 500,000 dollars, you know, ahead that would mean that we'll get, we'll get payback in two years, not 20 years? The cost analysis of the lifecycle cost of these things have not been considered. That's all I wanted to do. And then I wanted to raise the issue of probably the most difficult and most safe and troubling issue to me is the ventilation and air, the heating and ventilation in this high school, and yet, nobody wants to even address that. So, you know, folks, you can do what you want, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Orhan to come in and give us a presentation at some point in time, and then maybe we could go over to the town council and talk about other ways of doing this. Because we certainly need the roof and some of these other things we need, but are they really the top priority? And that's all I was trying to do. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you. Tonight, on several occasions, it has been stated that we need to utilize the 2 million dollars from the old 9 million dollar bond issue. And Mr. Draper, I'm gonna ask you to correct me if I say something incorrectly. The bond issue that was passed several years ago for 9 million dollars was written very specifically, school and work performed under the bond issue. And when, when the town went to the bond council group that had to approve of us using the 2 million dollar authorization, we don't have the 2 million dollars. We have the authorization to borrow the 2 million dollars from that 9 million dollar bond issue. At first, the bond, the bond council said we could use it because they read Davisville and didn't realize that it was Davisville Elementary and not Davisville Middle School. Big difference. We cannot use the 2 million dollars of authorization on Davisville Middle School. That's, that's the opinion of bond council going forward. Now, in order to be able to use that money, you have to go back to the voters, according to bond council, and get them to accept now that you're going to use it on buildings or areas other than was specifically spelled out in that bond issue request. Am I right so far, Mr. Draper?
Correct.
Now, that bond issue was written specifically that way at the request of the asset management group of the town because they were tired of the way things ran in the past under James Halli. Now, whether you like it or not, that's the facts, okay? Now, I've heard about it twice tonight. No matter what you wanna say, the 2 million dollars worth of authorization cannot be used without voter approval. That means you're gonna have a referendum on it, and the voters are gonna have to do it. Okay? Now, moving forward, the last man in is the one who's gonna question everything that has gone before, okay? For over 16 to 18 months, the facilities committee has worked to try and do exactly what Ride has requested of us. Phase one, we did, and we had a year from phase one to complete phase two. Phase two required an architect, required professional engineers, et cetera, to make analysis adjustments so that we could go before the public and Ride to get approval. We don't need any Monday morning quarterbacks coming in at the last minute and saying, these people don't know what the hell they're talking about. And I'm really getting tired of this.
Well, then let them certify.
New question. Adam?
No, wait a minute.
Let them certify and write.
They already did certify.
All right, all right, all right. Let's, let's be this calm, folks.
I didn't say a thing. Why are you, what's wrong?
I don't wanna work at the council, do you, to try to do this, but I'm trying to do it, okay?
Mr. Welch has the floor. So, Mr. Welch, please keep yourself calm and finish up your remarks.
Well, it'd be nice if others respected the time of the speakers, like, their time is respected, and that doesn't happen on that end of the table.
Okay, Mr. Welch, you have the floor. Go on with your comments, please.
So, I would tell you that the reason I made the motion is because we really need to have this work done. Whether or not we do all of it, whether or not we spend all of the bond issue that would be authorizing us to do the work, one way or another, this community is gonna pay for certain things. Do we wanna do it with 30% coming from state aid, or do we wanna do it with 100% coming out of the taxpayer pocket? I know as a taxpayer which way I wanna go, and I know that we have done enough research and spent enough time with our facilities people and the architects and the engineers and all the survey work that we've done, that this work needs to be done. What the final cost comes in, as with the roof, until you take the roof off and you see what resulting damages have occurred from the years of leaks and the patches, until you get there, you're not gonna know the condition of that roof deck. Do I think the roof's gonna fall in? Probably not. I'm not gonna say that. But I'm gonna say that the reason that you put more money into the request than you think it could cost is because you cannot get a fixed dollar amount to replace that roof and cover all the variables. One of the things that causes a problem in the past, Mr. Draper, was the PCBs in the corking, et cetera?
The PCBs or asbestos, yeah.
Which we know we're gonna run into, and that's a variable, such, so is the insulation, whether or not it's dry and usable or whether or not it's damp. So, is this, is this school committee and is the facilities committee gonna allow this to go and spend money willy-nilly just because the town voters might approve it? Absolutely not. And remember that the facilities management people are all people in the trades. They're taxpayers like you and I, but they're professionals in the trades, and none of them are bidding on any of the work for this school department. But they're given their time and their considered opinions and experience to make sure that we get the proper guidance we need. Thank you.
May I have your floor, please?
No.
Listen, there's some comments here that are necessary.
I will put you down as we're going to talk, Mr. Cerisi. I'm sorry, you're after Mr. Cerisi. I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief, because I believe an awful lot has been said, to say the least. Just a couple of things that I wanna make clear. These types of projects that are in this bond request, as has been mentioned, are health and safety items. They're not luxury items. They're not turf and a new technology building and whatnot. These are health and safety items. The two forms of funding that the school department receives, the two forms of funding that the school department's allocated from the town council is our general operating budget and our capital improvement budget. These items do not come from a general operating budget. A capital improvement project, which is normally where we draw funds from, to pay for items such as roofs and things of that nature, in prior years was funded at approximately, we received approximately 500,000 dollars a year of funding allocated to us from the town council. In the last three years, the town council has not allocated 1 dollar to that capital improvement budget. So, you have a choice. You can't pay for this stuff out of your operating budget. You have no money in your capital improvement budget because it hasn't been allocated from the town council. It's gonna be paid for somehow. Brings us to where we are discussing this bond. You know, I'm listening to the discussion here, and I'm really should be feeling privileged to be sitting up here with such a knowledgeable group. We have architects, roofers, bus drivers, contractors. We have experts in every category sitting up here at the table, it seems. We have letters here. We have information from our facility subcommittee. We have information from the architect. You have information from Ride. You had Ride come here and give a presentation. Enough's enough with the dog and pony show. Please. I'm willing to bet the last dollar that I have that all the information that's requested could be provided to some on this committee, and they will still say they don't have enough information to vote. So, I would not sit here and support something that was luxury. And I'm having a hard time, to be honest, sitting here and supporting something that's required or a necessity, but I am gonna support it. I know that school committee members by statute are not required to be architects. We're not required to be lawyers or doctors or roofers or bus drivers, and I'm not gonna sit here and pretend to be any of those things. But I do know we're required to rely on the information that we're given from the professionals, and I do know that we're required to protect the health and safety of students. So, I'm done listening to the opinions of the multi-talented people that we have sitting on this committee, and I'm gonna defer to the experts. Thank you.
Mrs. Benson.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. I have nothing to say, and thank you for such glowing remarks, Mr. Cerisi. I'll let my vote speak for me, and I'm not a dumb wit that's sitting at the other end of the table. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
I'm just wondering, the cost of putting this bond in front of the town, since it's obviously going to be moved and it's obviously going to be voted in favor of. So, this cost of 10 to 20,000 dollars that's going to be taken out of the school money, is this a cost that we've been told not to incur in any of our votes tonight? We really haven't gotten into that issue because we jumped ahead to this specific. And I'm just wanting to know whether I should vote no or abstain in order to stay in compliance with some kind of an official order. I never got it at my house today because I was at another meeting. But I understand we've been informed by uniformed guards coming to our house to tell us not to take any financial obligations, that we are removed from being able to do that.
Just so you know, that was from Mike Embry, and he also backs the bond, and there's something in your packet to that effect.
It was not from Mike Embry.
And remember, it's the sort of thing of even if we approve by the school committee, it's still.
Trish Sunderland, who works for Mike Embry.
The next step is the town council has to approve for this to go out to a vote. So, we're merely taking the steps in the plan. So, even if we say, yes, we wanna go out to the vote, the town council still would have to do that. So, by doing that, obviously, they would approve of us spending the money to do it.
I've, I've heard that kind of sweet talk last time when we were told that we would only be voting to send this over to Ride, and we could still change our minds. And I think the townspeople could see how the pressure's been put on us tonight when we tried to change our minds. So, I've said everything that I've got to say. The only misquote that I heard when Dr. O'Jay was reading this was in the second paragraph. I didn't say three priorities. I said three paragraphs. I said, he said they should require the removal of the asbestos. And it actually says, a public health official could require. And I'm simply asking, has this occurred? I don't believe it has. And on the third paragraph, it says, future liability to some kind of ADA violations. So, what little bit I do know about asbestos abatement, and I've been through several of them, is if you've got friable asbestos up in the ceiling, the first thing they tell you to do is don't touch it. And if you're gonna abate that thing, you clear the building out. You cover that building over with, with plastic. Everyone's removed, and hazmat teams come in to take that asbestos out of there. So, how you're going to do all of this and keep the school running at the same time, I really don't know. And the only final thing I'm gonna say is, I heard very strenuously from this table tonight that we cannot use the 2 million that's already been out there in a bond. It's been sitting there for five years, and we haven't used it. And so, I would like to have the town council take a look at, maybe there's some way we can go in with a new vote or a new question in order to get the approval to use that 2 million dollars, because I am totally in favor of fixing the roof at Davisville as soon as possible. Thanks.
Mr. Mudge.
You know, I never said that I was against anything, per se. But, you know, several years ago, and I'll repeat it again, we put out and install sprinkler systems in three elementary schools. sprinkler systems in three elementary schools, probably cost us at least $3 million more, that were not, not required by current or past or future state or federal fire code regulations in two-story or below buildings. But yet, all the experts said, we need to do it. You know, Rye said we need to do it, this guy said we need to do it, but somebody forgot to talk to our fire marshal, who told these people that we didn't need to do it. All I'm trying to do is validate what the urgency is. And I've always done that, and I will continue to do that. And I did that when this building was constructed after it was constructed, as well as the roof jobs before in Hamilton that I complained about when I was on the school committee, and the other three roofs that we put on, which we ultimately did, and we've lost money on through the bidding process. So I'm going to avoid that. I've attempted to tell my colleagues here, well, maybe we can get together to some other ways to skin the cat. Mr. Cerisi, you said it, okay? There's another issue to do that. Maybe if we did a life cycle analysis on this stuff, we could go back with the council and say, hey, fund these three projects over the next three years, and we can get our rebates in two years instead of 20 years. Why can't we look at all those things? That's all I was asking to do. Come together and see if there's another way we could make these things happen. And I will ask this to our hand to come down here, and I will say, when we did this analysis, when the roof people did this analysis, why didn't they come in and ask them to perform an infrared study on the building to find out how bad it was? Because that then would have been a metric to provide to the builders, the condition of the school. It was just part of the process. So there were many ways we could have looked at it. And this is what bothers me, is the way we approach these things. You know, and I resent the idea that everyone's a critic, that everyone's a this and that. Well, I have, all my entire life I've been in the design field, so I do know a little bit about design. You know, and there's just so many issues that are left open here. And just to have arbitrary people come and say, this is a life-threatening issue, okay? Or this is a mandated ADA. Well, now we find out these ADA things may be a problem three years from now or four years from now. Well, I wanted to know exactly what that meant, because I would rather fix this high school system, okay? This has been a known problem with air exchange. Immediately, if we could, and if we can defer some of these other things that may be a problem later and address the high school problem, that's where we should put our money. That's all I've been trying to do. I was trying to bring this committee together, say, let's go look at the council, let's see if there's any way I'll skin the cat. And now we're really saying to us, we're not going before the school committee for $6.4 million bond. It's really an $8 million bond we need. Well, what the heck do we really need? Okay? Are we just going to tell them, why aren't we going forward with the $2 million bond to the town council, I mean, to the community as well? So tell them, hey, guys, we need 8.4 million dollars. That's all I'm saying. Not just give the community half the information or try to scare them into doing something. And I'm really disappointed we couldn't go through that process. And I tried to do it, and I wanted to do it, not even to say behind the table, but that's why I suggested we do. Nobody ever called me back when I suggested we do this. So, you know, you're not going to get my support to spend $6.4 million for a $2 million roof, and I hope we can go to the council and look at some other things, and I'm still willing to do that. And that's exactly why, okay, I asked, okay, if we could postpone this, because we were told, we had like two days to sign this damn thing to the state. We were told we had to have our form in on November 21st. We passed November 21st.
I have a motion to call the question.
Point of order.
I have a section.
Point of order.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a...
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
I'm reading in this book that you quoted from, and under reconsider, it says, "The motion to reconsider can be made only on the day the vote to be reconsidered was taken or on the next day. A legal holiday or recess is not counted as a day. It must be made by a member who voted with the prevailing side." Now, you quoted us two things incorrectly from this Robert's Rules of Order. You did not quote...
You're looking at the wrong page.
Wait a minute, I'm looking at the reconsider. It says it must be made on the day the vote to be reconsidered was taken or on the next day, and it must be made by a member who voted with the prevailing side. Now, if the lawyers want to sit here at the end of this table and that Robert's Rules of Orders be misquoted...
I'm going to read Robert's Rules. Reconsideration in a standing committee. Reconsideration in a standing or special committee differs from reconsideration in a meeting of the assembly in the following respects. Number one, a motion to reconsider a vote of the committee can be made and taken up regardless of the time that has elapsed since the vote was taken, and there is no limit to the number of times a question can be reconsidered. Number two, the motion can be made by any member of the committee who did not vote with the losing side, or in other words, the maker of the motion to reconsider can be one who voted with the prevailing side or one who did not vote at all or even was absent. Number three, unless all of the members of the committee who voted with the prevailing side are present or have been notified that the reconsideration will be moved, it requires a two-thirds vote to adopt the motion to reconsider. In this case, everybody who voted on the prevailing side is here tonight, so that doesn't apply.
But what you said at the beginning was that that's on a special committee, subcommittee?
No, reconsideration in a standing or a special committee.
Right.
This is a standing committee.
No.
It's a certain term of office. We just checked it on, we Googled it at the beginning of the meeting.
I'm going to overrule your point of order. We have now had a motion to call the question and a second, so we're going to take a vote on that first. Roll call, please. Not on a motion to call the question.
No, no, this is on the topic now.
You have to have the motion to call the question, and then we would take comment on the main question.
Lorraine Cage.
Yes, call the question.
Joe Thompson.
No.
Richard Welsh, is he? Oh, Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Yes. Linda Avanzano.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson, to call the question.
I didn't get the answers I needed.
No, to call the question.
She said, she said no.
No, because I would like to take this time, President, to explain to you...
Okay, now, no, you only get to answer yes or no if you're going to call the question. The motion has passed, four to three, to call the question. So now we call the main question, which was the motion that was made. Lorraine, could you please read the motion that was made a long time ago?
Please read it and read it loudly to our IT system.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine.
That the school committee reconsider the $6,460,627 bond authorization request for town council approval.
All right, that is question. Mr. McGwin, you may have three minutes to speak.
First of all, this body has ruled on several times with Ms. Carroll agreeing that what Mr. Thompson said, someone in the prevailing group has to bring forth the question, and I'll research that, and I'll show you how many times you've done that. You've turned down the minority on a number of occasions, even in the past 12 months.
Oh, yeah.
And it gets to something that's been said in the papers, and I've been watching on the internet recently, didn't want to interrupt your meetings, how dysfunctional this group is. And that gets to the point of credibility. This is a very important bond, when you say health and safety, and imminent danger of failure of a roof? Imminent danger of failure of a roof, and Mr. Welsh may not be up to date on the latest construction testing standards, but infrared thermography has been around for 30 years, and it does identify roof leaks, and it will identify wet insulation. The other one is density testing of the decking, okay? Mr. Mudge has been in the construction field. He's gotten awards for it from the Department of the Navy, so I think he's the only one up here. All he is asking for is, if there is a true health and safety issue, let's not wait six months and roll the dice on whether or not the voters approve it or not, let's get someone out there now to test it. Because I wouldn't want my child in a roof that the superintendent just said may fail, may fall down on top of them, or in a building, and Mrs. Avanzano was involved in this previously, where there was asbestos. So it would seem to me to be important to test both of those things, if they can be tested. This bond needs, elements of this bond need to be passed. But I'm telling you right now, this body does not have the credibility to get a bond. And part of your credibility is the other issue on your agenda tonight.
And you have no credibility, sir, either.
A deficit that just your last meeting, it was said there was no anticipated deficit. You need credibility. And I would do the testing Mr. Mudge recommends ASAP, because you're talking imminent danger to students. Once someone says that, you better do the testing.
Mr. Grundy.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the facility subcommittee. Some of the issues that we've written about and tried to address in our letter have been covered tonight. For the record, the facility subcommittee is made up of people that come from different aspects of construction, they come from school departments outside of this district, they come from the finance side. We don't get into policy, we deal strictly with the construction side of it. But we do have some observations and some answers to some questions related to the bond requests that we'd like to address. The proposed bond would cover expenses related to repairs to protect the safety and well-being of the students and the employees of the North Kingston School Department. The repairs will need to be done with or without a bond. Nothing on the list of repairs is a want, everything we feel is a need. The town and ultimately the taxpayers will be paying for these repairs one way or another. The question about the bond is, do we want Rye to assist the residents of North Kingston in paying for these repairs, and at a rate of 30% to 40% reimbursement, because those numbers do seem to be somewhat fluid when we speak of them, or would we rather pay for all of the repairs out of our own taxpayer pockets? The repairs consist of a roof replacement at the Davisville Middle School, and we're currently spending tens of thousands of dollars every year on temporary repairs. These numbers were provided to us at the facility subcommittee by the school department. We know that as these repairs go on, we continually incur additional damage to insulation, to substructure, and possibly to other structure and facilities below. The money will be necessary to prevent further damage to decking, insulation, or interior portions of the building. Continuing to spend money on temporary repairs is spending good money after bad. The ADA improvements at the five schools, the ADA requirements are mandated by federal and state law. They were identified as requirements by SMMA and stamped by the architect. We can disagree, Mr. Mudge, but we do have an engineer's stamp on it.
There is no...
The town is only one lawsuit away from having to make these repairs. We do also have an obligation to the students and users of municipal facilities to make them accessible to all. The HVAC improvements at three schools. Some schools, such as Wickford Middle School, have heating systems that have actual operational and major safety issues. For those of you that aren't aware, the heating system at Wickford Middle School is controlled by an on and off switch. The boilers turn on and run to high limit, and then safety controls shut them down. Terry Merkel has done an excellent job controlling the heating costs, but we can't always count on what we've come to call the Merkel factor. Replacement and updating these systems also has a payback in energy savings, and this was identified by several energy audits, all of which have been stamped by professional engineers.
But these are part of the bond for Wickford Middle School.
This is not open for comment, Mr. Mudge. This is Mr. Grundy's citizen's comment. Please move on.
But I understand, but that has nothing to do with this bond.
Mr. Mudge.
Excuse me. I'm trying to correct that, okay?
Mr. Grundy, may I speak? This is citizen's comments. It is not your time to speak, Mr. Mudge.
The asbestos removal at the various schools, asbestos is a known carcinogen, and while the asbestos in question is currently in a state that does not meet Rhode Island Department of Health's threshold as safe, please remember that children are naturally inquisitive. And again, this is a problem that needs to be addressed. Generally, asbestos will affect people 20 to 40 years from exposure, and that puts these students at the prime of their lives. There've been some questions that have been raised by the school committee members at both meetings and through various press forums covering the issue. Some of these seem to, some of these issues seem to be covered at subcommittee meetings, but perhaps we, as a subcommittee, didn't make it properly explained to the school committee. The first one, which I don't want to beat to death that Mr. Welch covered, is that the use of bond money from previous bonds. There is no extra money hanging around. There was an authorization to borrow a certain amount, but the money's never been borrowed. It also involved the wording of the bonds and whether or not they could be used for things other than what the voters initially approved. The second issue is getting bids first so we know how much to bond for. In order to go out to bid, you must first develop specifications, advertise, then bid a project. One key question that is either included in most RFPs or asked at nearly every pre-bid, is this project funded or is funding in place for this project? If the answer is no, most contractors will submit, will not submit their best bid. What you will receive is budget estimates. We already have these budget estimates in place as they were part of our phase-two submittal package. Secondly, most bids are only good for 30 to 90 days. The process to request a bond or obtain funding, requesting school committee, town council approval, then scheduling running an election, and hopefully receiving voter approval, will take quite a bit longer than that 90 days. Another question was if the numbers we're using for these repairs seem too high. This question was particularly brought up regarding the roof at Davisville Middle, which was the single largest item. Factors influencing the projected cost of the replacement roof were a forecast of where prices might be months down the line, including potential future spikes in commodities, which can have major cost implications by the time we're ready to go to bid. We must remember that a year from now, market conditions may not be as favorable for owners as they are today, resulting in higher bid prices in the future. Many of these projects will require work to be done when students aren't present. The roof repairs at Stony Lane were a perfect example of this. Most school districts schedule work during the summer break, and that creates a surge in work resulting in higher costs. And lastly, the fact that since we're using public monies, this is a Davis Bacon or prevailing wage project, annual adjustments to wages, which always seem to go up and never go down, may result in higher costs. If bids come in below the bond amount, the town does not need to borrow the entire amount. In conclusion of the facilities committee's comments, $6.4 million is a responsible amount to request permission from the voters to bond and achieve the necessary improvements in our school facilities to protect the health and safety of our students and staff. The amount was provided by SMMA, then confirmed by school department administration, the facility subcommittee, and Rye, who clearly would like to give the town as little money as possible. Please keep in mind that this may be the last opportunity to receive any reimbursement from Rye, as that funding source has come to a halt, as the state has a three-year ban on reimbursing new school construction or renovation projects. While I was sitting here tonight, there was a couple of things that were kind of interesting to me. One was that Carolyn Dias would come down here tonight and basically ask us to take $2 million of their money. I don't know how many more opportunities we'll ever have to have someone offer us that type of money if the voters are willing to improve it. The second was some comments, and I do agree with you, Mr. Mudge, the ventilation at the high school needs to be addressed. We've spent quite a bit of time, we've walked the building, we've looked at the systems, we've gone over blueprints, we've been in the attics, we've been in the mechanical rooms. We've tried to come up with some different solutions to the problems, and it was part of the phase-one and phase-two projects. It was identified, it was quantified, different costs were given to different course of actions, but it was deprioritized by Rye, and it was lowered to the point of being non-reimbursable at this point. So... So, that being said, I appreciate, and I do agree with you that it needs to be done, but I don't think that we're going to see reimbursement for it.
Yeah, but again, I would have said.
Okay, we've called the question, we've had our citizens' comments.
No, we should test the school to see if we have a problem. We can do that.
Hello, I'm Ruth Ann Logan, the principal at Davisville Middle School, and before you proceed, I just wanted to let you know, we talked a little bit tonight about the imminent danger of the roof caving in, and I'm not an authority, so I really can't speak to that, but I can tell you that after rainstorms, we often have barrels in our hallways, not buckets, big trash barrels. We have had a rainstorm in the fall of 2010, over the weekend, where we were having to come into the building. Our computer lab is on the second floor, and it rained in the room, right next to it leaked. It was a mess. And it was about the first week of school, and it was, you know, ceiling tiles everywhere. We've gone around replacing ceiling tiles repeatedly over the last two years, many of them stained and unsightly. I've had teachers complaining about a very dank smell in the building. Last year, there was an ear study done on the, control on the ear, and it didn't find anything, but it remains that there continues to be a smell. And we use and run a dehumidifier the entire school year, even during the summer vacations, in at least three areas of the building to try to keep it as dry as possible. And I know money is tight, but I think it's a repair that's definitely necessary.
I agree, I agree.
I know everyone does, but I didn't know if you had any specific questions of what it might look like day to day. Last year, when we had the ice storm, we had to get up on the roof several times and shovel everything off because we had a lot of leaks even during the winter months.
Okay, move on, Kim. Thank you.
We'll try to get it for you.
All right. We, no, we have called the question, we took citizens' comments. Lorraine, could you please take a roll call vote?
William Mudge.
Call, please read the motion, please.
That the school committee reconsider the $6,460,627 bond authorization request for town council approval.
No.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Joe Thompson.
No.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
No.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
All right.
Now, doesn't it have to pass by two-thirds?
I'm going to, I'm going to.
To offer a motion to approve, that motion was to reconsider, you need a motion to approve.
Second.
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
Didn't we just hear a reading by the lawyer, yes, she's looking back, that that needed to pass by two-thirds vote of a reconsideration?
No, it only has to pass by two-thirds if all of the members on the prevailing side are not present. Tonight, everybody's present, so everybody that was on the prevailing side was.
Motion to approve and a second.
We were the prevailing side.
We were the prevailing side.
So, Lorraine, could you take a roll call vote?
Needs to be two-thirds, right?
No.
May I ask?
Roll call vote.
Very slippery, the way this thing. To approve the bond authorization request.
May I ask the attorney a question before we vote?
She has answered your question, it only needs to be a majority vote, you have heard the answer, you just don't like the answer. So now, the question is, I mean, the motion has been put on the table to approve the bond authorization request before it was to reconsider, roll call vote, please.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Joe Thompson.
No.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
No. And would you read the motion?
We already did.
William Mudge.
No, not at this time.
Thank you.
Kimberly Page.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
Motion passes four to three.
Okay, now, I want to remind the committee that while we traditionally have been saying that our meetings end at 10, actually by policy, they do end at 10:30. We have many things to go through tonight, and I want to make sure we have to, we have to get through many of these because we have December deadlines. So, what I would suggest we do is we start going through these motions, and I will give everybody, I mean, we will go through the agenda, if there's a motion on the floor, I will give each committee member three minutes to say their piece, and that is it. Because we are doing lots of nice pontificating, we aren't moving along, we have many things yet on our agenda.
I like you long.
We have to, I, I know policy isn't always important to people, but tonight, if we don't approve this policy, we will lose grant money. So that's the only reason those two policies are on here on the agenda, so.
We can't do three minutes per member if we want to get out of here, that's 21 minutes per issue, one minute.
I'd like to make a motion, we address the telephone contract. Okay.
Okay, telephone contract, do we want to take that, Mr. Cerisi?
I make motion to approve.
I second that motion.
Okay, so, we have a motion to approve the telephone contract and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Can I be in? We got a second, don't we?
Yes, yes, we do have a second. We second it. Okay, the only thing I want to say is I want to make sure that is, I want to make sure that we understand that this is a telephone contract, that right now, we have no plan exactly as to how we would be doing any sort of consolidation. I know at the last consolidation meeting, Dr. Ogier conveyed that he'd be very interested.
Point of order, ma'am, point of order, this has nothing to do with consolidation, it's a telephone bid or no bid, the consolidation committee is not considering this as part of consolidation, they'll have their recommendation, it'll be handled separately, let's move on and vote on the contract.
Okay, and I would just say that this does not preclude consolidation in this vote.
That is correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, citizens' comments.
Particularly with your deficit and with the letter that you received from the town finance director, your vote is, is not valid, it's mooted. And in fact, I think it should be asked if you can, someone should see if you can extend the current Verizon contract that you're already paying, and.
We have asked that at twice the cost, I think they'd be very happy to go this route.
Well.
Monthly rate, twice the cost, I don't think they'd want to take that on, Mr. McGwin.
I think it's going to be up to the.
Could they take a year's contract?
Okay, this is citizens' comments, so let's let Mr. Mudge.
I think it's going to be up to the town financial director to establish what in fact is done with this, because you've lost your ability to make your own budget decisions as of right now.
I disagree with that.
Okay, Lorraine, roll call vote, please. Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
No. I'm obeying the letter from the town treasurer.
Just yes or no.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
Mr. Mudge. Mr. Mudge, you were called, I don't know if you.
I know.
Okay.
I'm going to abstain.
He wrote one way or the other.
No, I'm not, because my next question is.
Okay, we don't need any discussion, Mr. Mudge has decided to stay, that is his right.
Okay, I'll go back and, I'll go to back and ask a question then, okay? Please, I would like, point of order, I would like.
Have we finished the roll call vote?
I would like, point of order.
We just need to finish the vote, please.
Point of order. Before I can vote on this, I would like the attorney's opinion.
Finish the vote.
Regarding the commitment of these monies. I would like the attorney's.
We'll take the vote, and then we'll have the attorney, so Mr. Thompson.
Well, it could.
No.
Okay, now you may address the attorney issue.
Mr. Mudge, I don't agree with the letter that we got from Mr. Embry, nor the memo that we got from the finance director today, and let me explain why. Under 1691, it says, "Purchase orders or financial commitments shall not be authorized even on the order of the school committee unless it can be proven that there will not be an excess of expenditures, encumbrances, and accruals over revenues." At the present time, you have a $58 million budget that's been approved by the town council. Of that $58 million, according to your November statement, the school department has only authorized the expenditures of $19,461,000, meaning that you have another $38,630 to spend before you have any deficits. So therefore, my letter that's going to Mr. Kinder, who is now representing the town in this issue, that'll be going tomorrow, says that any, this action is premature.
Okay, fine, I just wanted to know that, you know, are we going to get a copy of that?
I'm going to read it to you at that time, I have it. I can get you a copy, you can have my copy before the end of the night.
That's fine.
Okay, so I think his letter and the finance director is premature.
All right, you may ask a question, and then we need to move back to the agenda.
The letter that you just read, and we mentioned in executive session that we had a letter from the town treasurer, why didn't you give us that information then? That would have had a lot of outcome on some of the.
Because we are not discussing the budget in executive session, it's open session material.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask if we go to the truck?
Yes.
It's December.
We can go to the truck.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the, the truck that we have discussed more than once on our agenda. Do I have a motion to Mr. Welch?
Yes, I make a motion.
Second.
There's, there's two items on the agenda, I'd like to go with the purchase of the truck, not the lease.
Okay, can you specify as to what your motion is, please?
My motion is option one.
No, no, Mr. Welch.
I'm in disagreement with the superintendent, my motion would be to finance it as a lease with a purchase agreement at the end of the lease.
I, I heard something. So, because Mr. Welch is making a motion to lease the truck rather than purchase the truck, it doesn't have to be a motion to reconsider, because we didn't consider the lease last time, we only considered the purchase last time.
And he wasn't here, according to your ruling, so we don't have.
No, this is a new motion.
This is a different motion.
He was absent when we.
But the lease option was discussed at a prior meeting, right?
But the lease option has never been voted upon, so it is a new motion, so.
So we need to wait for a whole meeting in order to vote on it?
No, we don't, we have it on the agenda today, so.
And as such.
Different motion.
No, it is a new motion, so it can be taken here tonight. It is on the agenda, if you will look at your agenda, you will see the motion either to reconsider the buying of the truck, or a option two to lease.
Adam Chair, please call a question.
I just want to explain something.
Go ahead, Mr. Welch.
Under, under the letter from the town finance director, this has to go before the town, and the town has to be the agency in which goes for the lease, it can't be done by the school committee. So we're only asking the town to facilitate the lease for the school committee, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the table and a second, is there discussion?
May I make a statement?
You may discuss this for one minute.
For bringing that out, they have completely ignored that, and you put it in the right perspective. People don't enjoy not voting for nothing, but you don't enjoy a person not giving you a chance to speak. You put that in the right perspective. It has to go to the town council. Thank you.
All right, Lorraine, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
No.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
Sir.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Joe Thompson.
No.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Can we take the policies now?
No.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would like to talk about the deficit issue.
We have to have this policy passed in order to get a grant, so.
Grant is that?
It is the grant for our COZI grants, or they've asked us to basically put on the KBLA because they have to have a, it's very specific as to how they have to have their parent.
How much of a grant, what's the cost of the grant, and what's the value of the grant?
More money than, than we get if we don't have this policy, because we get nothing.
Okay, that's so.
So, I'm just asking for the policy change.
This is part of being in alignment with Title I.
Motion to approve.
Second.
What is the value of the grant?
So, we have a motion to approve both policies, KBLA and JCA, I have a second. Lorraine, could we have a roll call vote?
Melvoid Benson.
No, because it's not, we don't go into things long enough.
Okay, Larry Cerisi.
Oh, is he here? Call him in a minute.
Oh, William Mudge.
No, the lack of information, I don't understand what's happening, no.
The Senate's member of the school committee, not a two. Joe Thompson. Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
Okay, I know that everybody wants to get to the, the school deficit, I will remind the committee that we have not approved the consent agenda, okay? So we will not leave here tonight until we have the consent agenda, okay? So, unless somebody has a motion right now, the only thing you need to exempt is you need to exempt the, the executive minutes, because they have to be voted on separately.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
With the exemption of the minutes.
Wait a minute, we didn't even get to take things off.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda minus the executive session minutes.
We're going to have no other?
All those.
We have, by statute, every, and policy, policy.
What exemptions do you want, Mr. Mudge?
Put them all exempted, because they're all applicable.
Madam Chair, you have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda.
We go back and forth on this, point of order.
What is your point of order?
We go back and forth on this as a committee, and this is part of the dysfunction. If you guys want everything on the consent agenda, then we don't get to take anything off. But if you guys don't like it, if Larry, if not Larry, if Dick Welch wants to talk about something, then you let him take it off the consent agenda.
Okay, I do have a point of order.
That you're just, once again, you're making unilateral decisions.
You may vote against the motion.
You did not give us an opportunity to remove things from the consent agenda, now we're back to that. And that's a policy violation. It says in our policy, we take things off the consent agenda to.
Point of order, point of order, please note.
This is a policy violation.
No.
Did the secretary record that?
The motion, and the motion was made. If you disagree with the motion, you vote against it.
Policy of how to run a school committee meeting, you got a dysfunctional committee.
Yes, Mr. Cerisi. Excuse me?
Thank you. You have members sitting at this table who intend to vote no on every agenda item.
No, he didn't say that.
His only purpose here this evening is to block the committee and the school administration from conducting business.
Absolutely wrong.
Block in delay.
Mr. Cerisi has the floor, please.
I would ask, if they want to vote, if they want to enter into the record that they vote no on every agenda item, let them do it now, let's enter into the record and go home. It'll be in the record that you voted no, and let the rest of the committee in the town get some work done. Madam Chair, nobody has the right to prohibit a public meeting from going forward, including committee members. I would ask, I would ask.
Okay, Mr. Cerisi has the floor.
That if you, if this behavior continues to obstruct this committee from going forward, call a recess, call the police, and have these people removed, because this is ridiculous.
Why don't you call the police now, Larry?
All right, thank you very much.
That's terrible.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Lorraine, could we have a roll call vote?
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
William Mudge.
Oh.
Joe Thompson.
No.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
No.
Motion passes four to three.
Okay, we have the two executive session minutes, and we need to amend the minutes of the eighth of the twenty-second.
Thanks a lot.
Good night.
You know, I want to thank you, Mrs. Page, the way you conduct the meeting, and I will say.
Okay, I have the floor, Mr. Mudge.
You always have the floor.
Mr. Mudge, I have the floor.
This school committee agenda doesn't even comport.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge, you may leave if you do not want to follow the procedure.
Point of order.
You were cutting me off, I believe, so.
Okay, point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge.
Point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge, for your time.
Point of order.
I have the floor. What is your point of order?
This agenda is not compliant with school department policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge.
Are you aware of that, Mrs. Page? What you have done since you've been chairman is you have violated school department policy.
Okay.
You violated school department policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. I have not violated a policy.
You haven't?
Thank you, Mr. Mudge.
You have-- the agenda hasn't? Are you telling me the agenda hasn't? All you have to do--
You can call it now. Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Mudge.
Thank you. Well, why don't you look at school department policy and find out why there isn't citizens' comments on this agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mudge.
Yeah, Chairman, why isn't there citizens' comments on this agenda?
I'll take a motion for a recess.
Okay? Okay?
Enough's enough.
Yeah, enough's enough is right. I agree. It's over.
Okay, we have-- now, I am asking on the Executive Session minutes, I'm asking for a motion to approve the minutes with the amendment that the-- the one was passed four to zero with Mr. Welch and Mr. Thompson had left.
So moved.
Move the amended minutes with that change.
With that change.
In other words, approve the minutes with that amended change.
Correct.
Exactly. So moved.
All right.
It is a second and a vote.
Second.
No, he can't second either.
Oh, I would second. Sorry. I'll second the motion.
Okay. Why you would've lost the train of thought, Madam Chair?
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. And I believe it is Mrs. Avanzado and Mrs. Benson and I are the only people who can vote because Mr. Cerisi and Mr. Welch were not here. So all those in favor--
Read the motion. You've done so much talk.
It's approval of the Executive Session minutes from November 8th. All those in favor say aye.
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 Second. I second.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
You don't give people a chance to--
Abstain.
Thank you. All right, so now we have one of the most important things on our agenda to get to. Thank you for all being so patient. We are now at 2011-2012 school budget. One of the things before-- I'm gonna let Dr. Oger talk about this, but I do want the committee to know that we talked about this yesterday in the Budget Subcommittee. And one of the things that we took a vote-- that was a unanimous vote in the Budget Subcommittee-- was said-- it said we would notify the Town Council of the anticipated revenue shortfall of $712,000 and inform them in accordance with the Rhode Island state law and the policies of the Commissioner of Education. That was the vote. It is the sort of thing-- that that was the recommendation, that we do nothing more but to make that vote by the Policy Subcommittee. I guess, you know, the will of this committee is here, but I think--
It wasn't the Policy Committee. It was the Budget Subcommittee that we had the meeting.
It was the Budget Subcommittee, but that was the motion that we made to notify the Town Council of the anticipated revenue shortfall of $712,000 and inform them in accordance with Rhode Island state law and the policies of the Commissioner of Education. So if the committee would like to go that route, this is what I would say, is it's the least-- it is the least confrontational vote. What it would mean is that we would then inform the Town Council that we basically could have a deficit of up to $712,000. It would then allow us then to start talking with the Town Council as to how we want to handle this matter. One of the benefits of doing it this way is that we can then basically have this be something where all of us as elected members of the town are working together to resolve this problem. It is not something that we have to be controver-- I'm sorry.
Confrontational.
Confrontational. Thank you, Mary Ann. It's been a long night. So I will now look to the committee to see what you would like to do. Mrs. Benson and then Mrs. Avanzado.
I think you have misplaced a few of the words that was in the motion yesterday.
I wrote those down just exactly as Mr.--
Okay, I'm not being confrontational.
Thompson asked.
And we said yesterday that we asked them to work together with us. Now, I don't come out here to argue with you every night because you are the biggest hindrance on this committee we got. You don't give people a time to speak. You don't give them a--
Point of order.
Benson, I gave you a lot of time to speak. I gave Mrs.--
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
I'm sorry. I digress.
Am I point of order?
Yes. What is your point of order, Mrs. Avanzado?
My point of order is personal attacks by committee members against the chair or other committee members are not allowed per Roberts rules. That's my point of order.
I hope you will speak up every time they happen, Mrs. Avanzado.
I'll try, but it's difficult with the number of times it happens at this table.
Okay, well, you're a very smart lady and you're a lawyer.
Mrs. Benson, what would you like-- do you have something that you don't like about the motion that was made yesterday? Or I should say, what was done yesterday in the Budget Subcommittee?
No, we stopped it, but we asked for their assistance.
Yes, we did. That was exactly what the motion said.
Read the motion again.
The motion was that we notify the Town Council of the anticipated revenue shortfall of $712,000 and inform them in accordance with Rhode Island state law and the policies of the Commissioner of Education.
And we said that we would like to--
That was the motion. That was what--
Okay, have it your way.
It was the discussion that we did say that. But that was not part of the motion that Mr. Thompson made.
Have it your way.
Mrs. Avanzado.
Okay, a couple of comments on this. First of all, just the fact that-- and I want the public to understand this-- that this is not an actual deficit, real time as of right now. This is a prospective deficit, taking some numbers that we are projecting over the course of this year. So that if certain-- maybe I'm incorrect. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I was correct.
Okay, so if certain things are resolved favorably-- contracts and other issues-- then this deficit won't exist. So I'm a little bit leery of-- you know, I think we did the right thing absolutely, though, letting-- I know it's a statutory obligation, and it's the right thing to be public about it, to be upfront about it, and to be working on it ahead of time. And I commend you for doing that. It's very unlike times in the past when things were hidden. So I don't mean to level any criticism at the administration for bringing it forward. And I think I definitely approve of discussion with the Town Council and trying to work with them and figure out what the best thing to do for the taxpayers, for the students, for the town as a whole. Definitely, absolutely. I'm not in favor of a confrontational approach. However, receiving a letter via the police right before the meeting from the Town Manager saying, "You have no more authority to spend any money." Yes, it came from the Town Treasurer via-- I'm assuming her boss, the Town Manager-- that the school committee no longer has the ability to spend any money. I question that as being not-- first of all, I question the legality of it. I want a legal opinion from our council in writing. In writing. I would also like to know what the Town Solicitor has. I noticed his name was not on that order saying that we can't spend any money, which I find to be kind of a drastic claim. So I suggest we kind of hash that out, number one. Number two, when it comes time-- in terms of what we do about this prospective deficit, my inclination is not to go to the town and ask for more money when we have money in our surplus. That's my personal inclination. I think it's very difficult to go back. I understand that that may be the town's obligation, but I think it's difficult to go back and tap into taxpayers again when we have money there, you know? Obviously, at some point in time, we're gonna be needing to turn to the Town Council and say, "Well, we're going to need some more money." We've been level funded three years in a row. We haven't been funded in our capital budgets. We went from spending, you know, way too much money-- 5%, 6% increases a year-- now to almost like stifling the school side of the house while the taxes go up every year again on the town side. I have to point that out, not to be confrontational, but to get the information-- the correct information out on the table as to what's happening in this town. The taxpayers need to know the full picture. So that's where I am on it right now. I will look for further guidance from the administration and from our attorney.
Mr. Welch.
In light of this situation and what may be a lack of support for our request should we need $712,000 or some portion thereof, I would remind this committee and the public that a couple of years ago during the budget process, we, under Superintendent Thornton at the time, requested a budget that called for what we thought was a 5% reduction in state aid. Do you remember that, Mr. Draper?
Yes.
And the Town Manager stood up and said, "My sources say that it won't be 5%, it'll be 2%." Okay? And then the Council President, Elizabeth Dolan, said, "If it does not come in at 2%, and it comes in at 3% or 4% or 5%," whatever comes in, "we will make up the difference. You should come and ask us for it." Well, it came in at 6%, cut an aid, and we never went to the town and asked them to give us the money, which was then about $370,000. We are all taxpayers here. It all comes out of our taxes, no matter whether you call it town or school. So, you know, what have you done for me lately? Well, I mean, that's what we did, and that's what we've been trying to do with this committee, is to save money in every way we can. And I would hope that the Town Council remembers what we did and didn't ask for. Am I right, Mr. Draper?
Yep.
And I would ask that this committee remembers that when we go before them, whether it be on the new budget or the current budget. Thank you.
Dr. Oger, I apologize. I should've gone to you first after when this came up.
That's okay.
So I defer to have you say what you'd like to say.
Sure. I appreciate the motion from the Budget Subcommittee. However, I would just like to add the clause that is at the end of the current motion, that the town will be responsible for the shortfall. That was originally put there by me with Mr. Draper's help and also consulting with Carolyn Diaz and our own attorney. That is the law. And, you know, what-- I'd like that to be on the record. But I also would like to say this. I'm not interested in fighting with the town over this. One way or another, we are all responsible for what's going on in the business of North Kingstown. The town owns the schools as much as the school committee owns the schools. So I would like to work with them and talk about how we get rid of this budget deficit. It's not, you know, the biggest crisis ever to face the earth. We can work through it, and we can do it cooperatively. I would prefer to do it that way than, you know, to be-- you know, having armed people come to doors delivering paperwork or, you know, issuing threats of lawsuits and that sort of thing. In all likelihood, it seems like, you know, it will be lawyers talking to one another about this eventually, if not already. So-- but I would like to do it amicably. And whether we use-- eventually use some of our own fund balance to take care of this, and the town uses some of their fund balance to take care of this, that's fine. I think the voters out there see that both the town and the school district have some fund balance that could go toward it. The problem with the school committee-- the school committee's fund balance is that it doesn't equal the $712,000. It's under that figure. So we're gonna need some help from the town one way or another. Now, as Mrs. Avanzado said, this is not a deficit that we're realizing right now. It's anticipated if everything stays the same. We're doing everything we can to resolve these ESP negotiations as quickly as possible. And once we do, one way or another, this will change. We don't know the details on that yet, so we can't, you know, act differently than we are right now. But I think we need to be out there saying that the town will be responsible for the shortfall. That is the law. And I think it's important for this committee to be clear with the Town Council that that is the law.
Mrs. Benson and then Mrs. Avanzado.
I just want to say that we've had this situation before, and we've worked through with it. And I still think we can. And the situation of receiving the letter, I will be remiss if I sit here and let you constantly say the things that you're saying about that because that has always been a practice. When my late husband was chairman of the Democratic Town Committee, when they needed any papers-- not only this, any papers-- they would send them out by policemen. Not like we can't send your records, the minutes, to your house on a school bus like we've done for 20 years, or 30 years. That has always been the practice of that. So I'm through with that. But I think it's wrong to classify that as a threat or anything. Mr. Welch, I don't know if he was in town or not when my late husband was chairman of the Democratic Party. Were you?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, it wasn't in 1902.
Mrs. Avanzado.
Oh, that's what I have to say.
Just a quick--
And I'm gonna dismiss myself now.
Just two quick things.
Oh, good.
I understand that may have been the way it was done in the past. Just as a taxpayer, I just don't think that's the-- we've changed some of the ways that we do things, and that's maybe not the best use of municipal dollars and time. But my main point was--
Mrs. Avanzado has the floor. Mrs. Avanzado has the floor. Mrs. Benson. Mrs. Benson. Mrs. Avanzado has the floor.
My main point was, Kim, that maybe the best thing to do would be have you and Dr. Oger or Mr. Draper and you, or I don't know, some group of people go over and talk to Council President Dolan and Mr. Emery and discuss some of these matters and see if, you know, there's any common ground or there's any--
I would--
That would be the best thing, obviously, if we could come to some sort of amicable--
You know, I did have a conversation with Liz Dolan tonight before I came here after I received my letter because I called her to make sure that I wanted this process to go as amicably as possible. And she was very open to us sitting down and discussing this. And if anything, that's how she said that she would prefer to handle this right now, that she thought that would be a good way of us all trying to figure out how this was going to be handled. And so that would be my preference right now, is that be how we would go forward. Whether we want to take that as an official motion or we want to just start with that right off the bat. I don't have any preference as to how this committee wants to officially do that. Obviously, it is something we need to start talking with the town about right away. Mrs. Carol.
Madam Chairman, I have one concern. Within five days of tonight's meeting, when we're-- reali, when the school committee is now really not realizing officially there's a potential deficit, we have to send a deficit reduction plan into the Auditor General. Now, we need some direction as to how we're going to address the Auditor General. Initially, part of what we had said is that we were going to ask the town to fulfill its legal obligation to make up the revenue shortfall, and then we were going to work on some numbers for the rest of the deficit. Because it's really broken up into two pieces. You have the revenue shortfall, which is the $712,000, and then you have the half a million dollars that's due to a lot of unforeseen negotiation tactics that haven't worked out to date. So what we need from this committee, how you handle that $712,000 is whatever way you want to do it, but we need direction so that we can submit to the Auditor General the budget reduction plan.
So do you need something much more specific, or can you say-
Well, I mean, if you want to tell us to say that we're going to break it up and we're going to go to the town and we're going to discuss with them the shortfall, but they have to then approve the plan because the Auditor General will have to go back to us approving our plan.
Okay, so you're saying we need to basically make sure that we have a discussion very quickly and then have some sort of definite direction?
Recommendation to Superintendent.
Can I make another proposal?
Yes, I'd like to hear from Superintendent, and I do see your hand, Mr. Welch.
And I may need some legal advice on this one. But I would recommend that we do both, that we take motion number one, that we do notify the town and include the words, "The town will be responsible for the shortfall." I think that is important to put out there. I would also like to make a motion that this committee have the Superintendent and Committee Chair meet with the town manager and the head of the town council to organize a detailed proposal to address this shortfall.
Is there any way that we can not say that the town will be responsible? I guess I'd like to have them make that decision as to what they're going to do. I feel uncomfortable telling the town that they're going to be responsible. I don't feel as if, I'm wondering, Mrs. Carol, is that-
Can we discuss, can you say that you're going to discuss the revenue shortfall with the town?
To decide who's responsible?
Well, it's pretty clear in state law that-
But I think that we can go into the matter of to say, that can be the motion, that we're going to go and enter into discussions to decide who is responsible, rather than saying that at this point. Mr. Welch.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if you say in your letter to the Auditor General, "Our action plan is this," step one, two, three, correct. "In the timeframe that we have, without having the opportunity to meet with the town side, we can't go to know whether or not we need to go to step two or step three or so forth." And this is a possible forecast of a possible problem by the end of the fiscal year. It's not in effect right this moment. And if the Auditor General doesn't like that letter, he'll get back to you. In the meantime, you have the opportunity to meet with the town people and discuss it and see what's likely to happen. I think, personally, I think you have this kind of soft play, the 7/12, and saying, you know, it may be that the town will ultimately be responsible based on the dividend case. But right now, we've got to, we've got to talk about this because it's required by state law. Just let it go with that and see what the Auditor General says. You've got to remember what time of year it is too.
Mary Ann's working on the legal aspect of it. I mean, one of the pieces to this is, as you're saying, we kind of whittled these motions down so that we didn't go as far as we initially thought we had to, and we made it just these two motions with that in mind.
But seeing the town's responsibility-
We agree on a starting point.
And I will tell you that I'm in agreement with Mrs. Avanzado, that I feel uncomfortable asking the taxpayers for money that we have in undesignedated cash. I understand structural deficit and all the rest of that, but in these times, in trying to convince our taxpayers that, you know, we have money, but we're going to ask you for some more, even though it's not enough to cover it, I think we need to take that out of our quiver and put it out there and say, "Okay, whatever we have left in undesignedated cash, we'll put towards this deficit and move on with it, folks." I think that's the right thing to do today for our taxpayers.
Well, if we don't want to make a motion, we can merely, at this point, from what I'm hearing from the school committee, is that you want us to take the action of starting the talks. And at that point, after we can start the talks, and at that point, if we need to make a motion to go further, we could always call an emergency meeting. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to do that, but after the talks, we would have some direction from the town. And that could be how we could take it here, from here tonight, if that is the preference of the committee.
Can I put that in the notice, that in terms of, that we're going to, we'll lay out with the money, we'll lay out the reasons for the deficit anticipated because of what, that's what we have to do, the same way Mr. Draper has given it to you, the breakdown of the shortfall and then, and then the deficit. And we can say that the first thing is that the school committee is going to discuss with the town council the revenue shortfall. I'll leave that alone. And then the school committee is looking into using any surplus to cover any, anything else or whatever. And then there is one more motion Mr. Draper would like because-
Yes.
The second one would help as part of the plan to reduce the deficit also.
Which motion is that?
The motion-
The motion to move the money from the first bond.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll make that motion.
So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the formal request payment of $49,012.25 in FY2 costs for fishing cove ADA playground work to resolve complaint to Rhode Island Governor's Commission on Disabilities from the balance of the $9 million bond. And move from the NKSD operating fund and capital funds per NKSD approval 61411. Correct? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in-
Is there a second on that?
Yeah.
Yes. Mrs. Avanzado. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Yes, Mrs. Carol.
We need to address one more issue about the potential deficit. On December 8th, Mike Embry sent a letter to Dr. Ogey stating that we are no longer able to spend money. And in the letter, he said, "If there are any further questions, to have me contact Attorney Kinder." I contacted, I first contacted the town solicitor to find out if this was just a typographical or mistake, and the solicitor informed me that on this budget issue, they would be using Attorney Kinder. So I did draft a letter to Attorney Kinder because after reviewing the statute that they have cited, which is 1691, it appears that they are premature in telling us that we cannot spend any money. And quite frankly, I don't believe the Finance Director in her memo to you today, which we just, I just got tonight, has the authority to say this, based on the fact that you're not yet in a deficit. So I wanted the authority. I didn't want to send this because this, I mean, obviously the town wants to get into some controversy. I don't want to fuel that fire, but I want permission to send back to Attorney Kinder, who I have to respond to my reasons for thinking that this information is premature.
Mr. Cerise and then Mrs. Avanzado.
I just have a quick question for clarification. That letter with the interpretation of the statute Title 16, that legal interpretation of that, that came from the town solicitor or from the-
No.
Finance Director?
It came from the town manager.
So the town manager gave us his legal opinion, not the town?
Right.
I was just trying to get clarification.
The town solicitor had nothing to do with this letter, no, nothing. All he told me was that he had been informed that Attorney Kinder would now be handling the budget deficit issue.
So we got legal interpretation from the town manager?
So the letter came from the town manager.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Avanzado.
I just, I think it's unfortunate that this has escalated already, you know. As hard as we may try not to escalate it, we all receive these letters at our homes by the, we could have had them at our desk today. We could have had them any other number of ways. And, and the attorney now that's handling the matter is not the regular town attorney that handles most matters, and he's very expensive, to put it bluntly.
I ask his preference.
And just, just, I don't know.
Mr. Cerise?
Madam Chair, one more topic under the budget that I'd like to address very quickly.
We haven't quite finished, Mrs. Carol.
Can I send the letter?
Need a motion?
Motion just-
I, can we really make a motion on that because it's not on the agenda?
Well, it's under the budget.
Consensus.
It's, everything has to do with, this is part of your budget deficit.
I would say that we can take a consensus-
Okay.
That our attorney can answer a letter.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last topic for myself on this budget. Rewinding to the presentation that was given by Carolyn Diaz from the Department of Ed earlier tonight, which seems like it was three weeks ago at this point. She did talk about some changes that have occurred since the transportation program, in the food service program that the state had implemented, had gotten off the, there's some changes that have been made since it was originally off, came off the ground. So, for those purposes, I'd like the committee to give the Superintendent authorization to work with Ride in formulating a cost analysis on some potential savings that we may be able to achieve in those two areas that she had mentioned. It's-
Cafeteria and transportation.
Cafeteria and transportation. Again, it's information gathering, and I think that information should be made available to the committee so we can have an informed discussion and hopefully maybe make some informed decisions on those topics in the future. So I would make that motion at this time.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we've had a motion to gather information on both cafeteria and the busing of special, transportation of special, or out of district, I'm sorry, out of district of transportation. So is there any further discussion on that? I think you're right. We've had, we did have extensive discussion by Mrs. Diaz. It is something that Dr. Thor, I'm sorry, Dr. Ogey-
All right. He's a good guy, too.
Has put under his comments. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Is there any other agenda issues that we have
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you very much. I appreciate your-
Discussion on that motion?
No, I think we're done. Thank you very much.